Good evening. Today is February 13th, 2025, and the time is 6:30 PM. I will now call the regular meeting of the District 191 Board of Education to order. Welcome to those of you who are in the audience and those watching online. Director Anderson, will you please lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Do I have a motion to approve tonight's agenda? So moved. Moved by Director Alt. Seconded by Director Mickelson. All those in favor say aye. Aye. All opposed, say nay. The motion carries unanimously. First on our agenda tonight is the Athletics and Activities Recognitions, and I'd like to invite Activities Director Bill Heim to the podium to join us in celebrating our students' accomplishments so far this year. Welcome, Bill. And thank you for joining us to share a little about those outstanding students.
Absolutely. Thank you for having me. Thank you Board Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Battle, and members of the school board. So I appreciate the opportunity to share some of the wonderful accomplishments of our students in District 191. Each of the people we'll honor here tonight were recognized at the state or even national level. I'm amazed at the talent, dedication, and character our students show as they participate in activities and athletics throughout the year. They represent themselves, their peers, and our community in such a positive light, and I'm so proud of all their accomplishments. One thing to note, that tonight we'll be celebrating the accomplishments from last spring and this fall. And tonight, there is a play production at Burnsville High School, so we're going to first recognize our Burnsville High School Theater Guild. Congratulations to Burnsville High School Theater Guild, which received an achievement in theater honor by the Hennepin Theater Trust for its production of Mean Girls, high school version. As a recipient of the reward, the program earned a spot to perform at the up-and-coming Spotlight Showcase. Spotlight Showcase is a Minnesota high school theater biggest celebration this year. Over 1,600 students will participate in the annual awards and recognition event, which will be held at the State Theater on June 10th. Receiving outstanding achievement in musical theater from Hennepin Arts Spotlight Education is an incredible honor for Burnsville High School, said VHS Theater Director Erica Sassevill. Each year, only a handful of students are awarded an outstanding award, and to be able to be honored for this nearly awesome event, and the production is beyond amazing. Our students and staff earned these honors through months of hard work, dedication, and we could not be more proud of what we have achieved. The production received outstanding designation for achievement in musical theater, overall technical production, overall performance, ensemble acting performance, ensemble dance performance, student orchestra, costume crew, run crew, overall technical team, and sound crew. It also honored honorable mention for ensemble performance. There's a lot that goes into plays. So individual honors are as follows. Outstanding performance in a leading role, Chelsea Sally as Janice Sarkisian. Honorable mention in a leading role, Ally Stewart as Katie Heron, Kenzie Banal as Regina George, Wyatt Hanson as Aaron Samuels. Outstanding performance in a supporting role, Clara Manbeck as Karen Smith, Becca Cronin as Gretchen Weiners, Kenzie Banal as Regina George, Wyatt Hanson as Aaron Samuels. Outstanding performance in a supporting role, Clara Manbeck as Karen Smith, Becca Cronin as Gretchen Weiners. Honorable mention in a supporting role, Kai Milos Campos as Ms. Norbury. Outstanding performance in a featured role, Trey Shibley as Kevin G. Outstanding in technical leadership, Ethan Lutke as sound designer, Kaylee Crampton as stage manager, Soliana Ben as costumer. And then evaluator, shout out awards, went to Gage Blanford, Zoe Lattery, Greta Dickhausen, Pierre Angeline, Lucy Benzel, Jasmine Talon-Ruland, and the ensemble vocal. We're not going to list everybody here because it's truly a team effort to produce such a great play, so congratulations to the cast and production crew for the recognition of their outstanding work. Next is cross-country. Congratulations to juniors Carly Lamott and Liam Merrill on their successful cross-country season this past fall. Both Carly and Liam placed second place at the State High School League's Section III AAA meet, qualifying them for the state meet in the state meet held on November 2nd. Liam placed 57th with a time of 16:34.3, and Carly placed 16th with a time of 18:43. Along with praising her accomplishments on the course, Coach Charlie Burnham said Carly's most impressive feat this fall was the intangible steps she took in leadership and overall investment in her teammates. The typically reserved lead-by-example actions of Carly, that she's made of the last in the past, have transitioned her into a full-scale accountable leader who can organize and rally a team that much admires her. About Liam, Coach Jeff Weber said at the state meet, Liam ran fearlessly to attempt to be in the top 25, which is all-state, even though he fell short of that goal, it showed his ability to be vulnerable while pursuing his goals. Big things are in store for his senior year. One, two, three. Perfect, thank you.
Did we get every, the whole team?
Yeah, did we have the whole cross-country team? Yeah. Come on up.
Is there anyone shorter than me?
Sorry, Ian.
Tom, stand on the side.
All right. One, two, three. Let's do one more. One, two, three. Perfect. All right, track and field, hard to think of on a day like this. Congratulations to juniors Carly Lamott, Caleb Kamara, and Yanik Amoy, Senior Albert Onwengi, and 2024 Burnsville High School graduates Marquise Howard, Madison Milecha, and Jeremy Sherlock for qualifying and participating at the state track meet last spring. At sections, Carly placed first in both the 800 and the 1,600-meter races, and Madison placed second in the high jump. At state, Madison placed seventh in the high jump, while Carly placed seventh in the 1,600-meter race with a time of 4 minutes and 58 seconds. Carly also placed 10th in the 800-meter. Madison, who received the Athena Award last year, is currently attending the University of Wisconsin at Stout, where she plays basketball and is majoring in environmental science. On the boys' side at sections, the 4x200 team, which included Caleb, Albert, Yanik, and Marquise, placed third and made state with the qualifying time. Caleb also took third in the 100-meter, making state with the qualifying time. Jeremy placed second in the long jump. At state, the 4x2 team placed 10th, and Caleb placed 12th in the 100-meter dash. Albert finished second place in the 400-meter with a time of 48:64. That's running around the track in 48 seconds. Jeremy placed 19th in the long jump with a distance of 20 feet 2 and 1/2 inches. Coach Kamaranum said Caleb, Albert, and Yanik are excited for the upcoming season and hope to lead our boys' track team. They have huge expectations and understand the work that needs to be done in order to achieve better results than last year. We're so proud of them and can't wait to see them blaze their trail this season. Burnsville High School alums Marquise and Jeremy are currently attending college. Marquise plays football for Bemidji State University, and Jeremy played football at the University of Wisconsin at River Falls. Congratulations to these outstanding student athletes. We're so proud of their success in and out of the classroom.
Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I'll just say, congratulations to each of you for these terrific accomplishments. I know as a parent of a Theater Guild alum and a parent of a current high school athlete, I know how much time it goes into all of these activities between the events themselves, the rehearsals, the training, so thank you for doing that and for presumably keeping your grades up. So, great job, thanks.
Thank you all for coming tonight. We really appreciate you spending your evening with us. Is there any other comments? Okay. Next, we will receive a progress report about the 2024 American Indian Parent Advisory Committee. Recommendations from Isis Buchanan, Director of Educational Equity. Welcome, Director Buchanan.
So, thank you Chair Wurbe, Dr. Battle, and members of the board. And so, tonight, we wanted to give you an update on some of our progress towards the APAC's recommendations. And so, I'm just going to go recommendation by recommendation. Recommendation number one was focused on culturally proficient training for staff, specifically looking at professional development around cultural heritage, generational trauma, and tribal nations. And so, these are the things that I'll share from that category. We have an equity plan in our district, and that plan includes some of the work that's here. Our library and media specialists spent time this year in professional development about how to evaluate and select Indigenous instructional resources for the libraries. And then, we also added new material to our curriculum and media centers focused around featuring Indigenous stories, information, and authors, and using some of the recommendations from the Minnesota and American Indians and Children's Literature Group. We also had professional development for a lot of staff in a lot of different areas, from our early childhood site administrators, even you all as board directors participated in sessions, as well as our administrators. This year, there was an opportunity for us to get youth copies of the book, Everything You Wanted to Know About Indians But Were Afraid to Ask. And so, several of our departments and schools have sets of those books that, I think there was a grant that there are funds to buy the books to give to schools, and so several of our sites added those. We also participate in the Dream Catcher Program, and so, we have three pilot school sites that are part of our attendance program as well, and they are really looking at ensuring that we're looking at the culture of our Indigenous students when they come up for interventions or concerns, so that we're making sure that cultural and linguistic differences are not ignored when you're looking at what are the causes to challenges students may have at school. We also reviewed our Indigenous Peoples' Day lessons. That was earlier this fall, and so, all, you know, sites had lessons in October, on October 11th, and then, we also have a plan to review those lessons as we prepare for the upcoming school year. And then, District 191 staff along with APAC members will be attending the American Indian Culture Conferences for our region, and so, MIEA is coming up soon, and then, there are other local conferences that some of us have participated in. Recommendation number two was about representation of Indigenous people in our school district, and so, we continue to have our land acknowledgement posters there, and APAC has created a revised version of that that includes images from the different tribal nations, so we're hoping to get those printed up in our buildings as well. And then, we also verified some of the informational texts and some of the technology tools that we use, like Pebble Go and Pebble Go Next. They added informational articles about Indigenous peoples, and so, we were making sure that we're reviewing those for inclusivity and that the information that they added was created by Indigenous authors and scholars. Recommendation number three, we will be talking a little bit more about that today, but the school name change design team, and so, we'll be sharing tonight more about that process and those recommendations. Recommendation number four, again, was about representation in our schools and really communicating the message of things. And so, our school district has done a lot to post information on social media in our different communication streams to make sure that people are aware of the events happening. And at the high school, even our students are like creating flyers and information, you know, like with artistic drawings. I don't know if you've seen any of them, but they're very creative, but they're even creating those to share about the events, and then, just making sure that we're sharing that information on a variety of platforms. Recommendation number five was in regard to the smudging policy, and so, through that process, we did add or revise the language in our Policy 419 to make sure that we're including the legislative language that was about smudging, you know, in school spaces. And then, our final recommendation was about programming support and staff in our district, and we have two staff members in our district, and I guess I'll use this time too to thank Rebecca Musso because she just left our district. And so, right now, we're looking to hire someone else in that specialist of American Indian culture role, but we still have our Indigenous Cultural Liaison here, and we're just working to keep things moving during this transition. And the Dream Catcher Project, we're starting to see the effects of some of those things, like having our staff attend meetings with our Indigenous students where staff are discussing things, and it really is allowing us to see the connections and having students have their voices heard, so that they feel like all of what they want to share is making it to those meeting spaces as teams are, you know, having their discussions. And then, we've also created a data dashboard in our new data system EduClima, where we're tracking student attendance, grades, and discipline data, like on a regular basis, so that we're following up with that. So, that is the end of my...
Are there any comments or questions from board members?
Can I add something?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you Chair Wurbe and members of the board. After Director Buchanan finishes and you have your questions, we are going to have a formal presentation on an update on one of the recommendations, and Director Buchanan and I wanted to give you information about the others, so you don't think we're giving them short shrift, but at the end of the month, Madison McKinney and the American Indian Parent Advisory Group will have a detailed presentation about the American Indian programming and some of the information that ICE has prepared. You'll also hear from APAC on their vote of concurrence or non-concurrence.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. Director Alt?
Thank you Chair Wurbe. Thank you Director Buchanan. This update is always appreciated. We like to hear about the work that you and your colleagues are doing with our families. And I particularly appreciated the comment about, you know, making sure that staff are not projecting their interpretation on behaviors, understanding and coming from a place of positivity to really make sure that, you know, we're looking at the child and not through some other filter. So, that was helpful. And I also appreciated hearing, you know, culturally proficient practices show themselves in our students when their activities are organically happening, so hearing that our students are creating flyers and posters to promote, that just, for me, that reads as a positive sign as well.
So, I just had a question about the staff training. So, how is that incorporated? Is that part of other training? Is it separate?
So, it sort of varies. So, like, different groups, when they have professional development days, there have been things that we've had, you know, planned with them, and so, some of our training for all staff was around some of the Indigenous Peoples' Day lessons, but for teachers, there have been some things that are for early childhood, for example, and so, we sort of tailored some of that professional development around the grandfather's teachings. And then, we also with our administrators, similar to the PD that we did with you, but it was more of historical context, as well as, you know, making that connection to some of the work that we are doing in our district. And so, I guess it's just, it sort of varies because I'm trying not to give, people really enjoyed the sessions that we had, and there was a lot of feedback from students and staff with learning we've done this year. However, one of the things that I really want to, you know, do as an equity director is just ensure that we're meeting the needs of people and the different people that they work with when in our school district, because people who work with four-year-olds are learning things that'll help them work with, you know, four-year-olds and understand culture. And then, the people who were in ABE or our high school, you know, may be learning about things that are more relevant to the students that they're teaching, and so, really trying to take that time to meet with other teams and departments to make sure that what we are presenting as professional development, like aligns with the work of our equity plan and of those different groups, so that it's relevant. And I don't like, even when I was a teacher, I don't like repeating, like repeating a lesson just with a new group of people. I really like to talk to people and find out more about what it is they're looking to advance with their team or department, and then, really trying to work together to build something that will help, you know, inform and add to how it'll impact students.
Thank you. All right. Thank you for the informative update, Director Buchanan, and thank you for your time this evening.
Thanks.
Oh, okay, you're going to be here for our next presentation. Okay. Up next, we will receive a report on the school names change design team process and outcomes. Presenting this report will be Director, Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent Isis Buchanan, Director of Education Equity, and Madison McKinney, Indigenous Cultural Liaison.
Thank you Chair Wurbe, Superintendent Battle, members of the board. Good evening. We're here to share the conception, experience, and the outcomes from that school name change design team process that Director Buchanan mentioned and referenced. First, we'll just kind of quickly show the board and the community the backdrop for why this design team came together. Direct your attention to recommendation number three. The Advisory, the American Indian Parent Advisory Committee around a year ago last winter recommended that we review the school names of Edward Neal, Gideon Pond, and Harriet Bishop Elementary Schools in the near future to look at potential name changes, make recommendations back to the board. Subsequently, at the next meeting, the board did ask Superintendent Battle to convene that group, and now we're here about 11 months later. Also, just to show once again those recommendations that Director Buchanan so nicely already walked you all through. So, at the time of that, of asking us to commission this design team, the reference was made to Policy 899, our school board policy that speaks to naming school buildings or facilities. Just draw your attention to some of the specifics within that policy is that the school board is the lone decision-maker when it comes to naming, that the school board, upon request, would like to see committees that include at least five to seven members of the community when receiving recommendations around school board names. Yep, so that was part of the pretext for this design team. Next slide shows a graphic for the process that we did follow, starting in April and then concluding this past November 2024. You can see that choice makers, again, that's the school board who oversees governance in our school district. The design team really is responsible for cultivating options. Rebecca Musso and I were served as co-facilitators, so our job is to prepare meetings, make sure we have pacing, make sure that our team is representative, inclusive, and collaborative amongst each other. If they're seeking information and resources, we help them find those, but really, our job is to not interject our opinions or anything throughout that process, but to just kind of keep it going and make sure it happens, and then, to try to seek consensus and direction. So, we did receive that this past November 2024, and now, we're here in front of you.
And so, I'm just going to share a little bit about the historical context. So, part of the design team's work was really a lot about learning and doing some investigation to find out more about Edward Neal, Harriet Bishop, and Gideon Pond, and so, I'm going to share a summary of some of the highlights, which is hard to do in a short amount of time, because there's so much history involved, so I'm going to do my best to give you an example of some of the things that our team found. So, Edward Neal was a 19th-century missionary, educator, and historian who played a significant role in shaping Minnesota's religious and educational institutions. However, his contributions to the region have to be examined alongside his role in promoting policies that marginalized and displaced Indigenous communities. Neal's work often reinforced narratives that justified settler colonialism, contributing to systemic erasure of Native histories and cultures. His writings and advocacy supported assimilationist education systems that sought to replace Indigenous traditions with Euro-American values, and leading to cultural disruption and generational harm. For Harriet Bishop, our summary includes information about how she was recognized as Minnesota's first public school teacher, but her influence was beyond education. She was an advocate for the Protestant missionary efforts, and she played a direct role in imposing Euro-American cultural norms on the Dakota and Ojibwe communities. Her work aligned with the broader assimilationist goals that contributed to undermining of Indigenous sovereignty, language, and spiritual practices. The school and the mission efforts that she was involved in also operated under an assumption that Indigenous cultures were inferior and in need of reform, perpetuating harmful stereotypes that have lasting impacts on our Indigenous communities today. And then, Gideon Pond was instrumental in missionary work as well, and his effects were among the Dakota people. While he played a role in documenting Dakota language, his mission work was fundamentally While he played a role in documenting Dakota language, his mission work was fundamentally tied to efforts of religious conversion and cultural assimilation. His legacy is intertwined with the broader movement that sought to Christianize and civilize Indigenous populations, often at the expense of their cultural identities. The mission schools associated with Gideon Pond contributed to the foundation of latter boarding school systems, and we've learned about some of those, that forcibly removed Indigenous children from their families, causing intergenerational trauma and cultural disconnection.
We talked through all of these, Madison McKinney, Indigenous Cultural Liaison. The legacies of Neal, Bishop, and Pond are deeply connected to colonial expansion and forced assimilation policies of Indigenous communities. Their actions of the past, promoting cultural erasure, land displacement, and assimilationist policies continue to impact our Indigenous students today. The impact of their actions, the loss of language and cultural identity are felt here in our community and beyond. And while we recognize that no one here today has inflicted this harm, this is our moment to be leaders of our core values in being a caring community and one that continues to grow through inclusive partnerships, and to also inspire healing by honoring the resilience and the contributions of our Indigenous community. So with that, the design team recommends that all three school names be changed to better align ourselves with our core values. And it is also recommended that those names be a reflection of a connection to the land and be formulated in partnership with local Indigenous nations.
Thanks, Madison. Back to you, Chair.
Are there any comments or questions from board members? Oh, sorry, I'm reading the wrong thing. Sorry. Board members, we have a work session on this topic later in our agenda, so we will ask that we hold comments until that time. Thank you for sharing, everyone.
Thank you.
Now it is time for a school report from Ron Elementary School, Sky Oaks Elementary School, and William Byrne Elementary Schools, presented by Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Principals Brad Robb, Dr. John Bonneville, and Dr. Renee Bradner, and their guests. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you, Chair. Superintendent Battle, members of the board, we have a school report tonight. Three incredible elementary schools here to share a little bit about their story. Just to remind the board, one of the features this year is to highlight one of the essential elements of cultural proficiency. In each of the board reports, there are five essential elements. It is, we take them very seriously as leaders in 191. We ground our work in them continuously, and we also look reflectively at finding threads in our leadership of those essential elements. So we hope you hold us to account for that tonight. And then I'll hand over to, is it Dr. Bonneville?
Yes.
Who's going to kick us off?
Great. Thank you. Well, thank you for the opportunity to share, members of the board, Chair Worb, Dr. Battle. This is always an exciting time, as we get to focus, obviously, on the wonderful things that are happening at each of our sites. So, my first slide here is, who are we? And this was an interesting question, because when I first came to William Byrne and opened up my desk drawer, I found an old pamphlet that was a part of its opening, from 1966. And the original charter, I'm going to read to you of what they said at that time William Byrne was all about. So William Byrne Elementary School is representative of the policies of the district to provide optimum facilities for the education of children. It's a good mission. It is a community school located on a 10-acre site just south of State Highway 13 in the Village of Burnsville. That was news to me, because I used to live in River Hills, and I had no idea that it was called the Village of Burnsville at the time. The building contains 24 classrooms and a common use facilities as a library, resource center, gymnasium, lunchroom, music room, large group instructional, instruction theater, and reading and speech therapy rooms. Now, of course, since 1966, William Byrne has evolved far beyond its beginnings, becoming a dynamic school dedicated to responsiveness, inclusivity, and student success. At the heart of this growth is a deep commitment to managing the dynamics of difference, ensuring that every child, every student's needs are met with understanding and support. So we've come a long way in expanding what that means as far as our community and making sure that we are, our efforts are reflective of that, which leads me to our next slide. Managing the dynamic difference, responsiveness to our community, that's the goal. I have two teachers, Ms. Kellon and Ms. Collins, who exemplify this dedication, fostering a school culture where learning is personalized, challenges are embraced, and community connections shape the educational experience. William Byrne doesn't just educate, it listens, adapts, and grows alongside its students and families. This approach ensures that every child is seen, heard, and empowered. So at William Byrne, learning's not just about academics, it's about building confidence, resilience, and a love for discovery, one student at a time. And what I'd like to do now is share in their words what they have to say here about William Byrne. And it's a great perspective. We have one who has been here a long time, and another who was hired just a few months ago. So I'm going to start with Mrs. Kellon. Mrs. Kellon is a kindergarten teacher at William Byrne. She grew up in Burnsville and attended Gideon Pond from third grade on, followed by Nicholas Junior High, and then graduated from Burnsville High School almost 30 years ago. I have fond memories of many of my teachers. Mrs. McDevitt and Mrs. Hugstad Va are just two of the amazing teachers I had. I met so many new friends when I started high school, some of which I still talk to today. I was so excited when 15 years ago, I was offered a position at William Byrne Elementary. I could not ask for a better school to work in. The families, the students that we work with are amazing. Our PTL cannot be beat. They find ways to include all families and students, help teachers however they can, and are truly partners with us. The staff here make everyone feel welcome and make our school a fun place to be. We have rituals that build each other up, like our shout-outs, and things that build community, like the Taste of Burn and our spirit wear, and our spirit wear, where students can get T-shirts, but they also have options for hats and hijabs. Our RISE team helps support our school in a positive, fun way. They lead our amazing assemblies and help find great ways to help us teach and reinforce skills. I look forward to coming back each year to teach here with the amazing groups of teachers and families. The fact that I'm able to teach in the district where I grew up is a gift. Now, Ms. Collins is a third-grade teacher, and she's not new to teaching, but she's new to William Byrne.
So my name is Toria Collins, and this is my first year working in District 191. And I want to say that I enjoy being here. I feel the love from everyone in all directions. I've never been greeted with so many hugs and smiling faces. This is the first time in a long time that I've walked into a school, as well as a district, and felt comfortable. Everyone is welcoming and ready to help. I don't have to look over my shoulder and see who's out to get me, because everyone here is working together for the betterment of students and staff. This is like a dream come true. The students, the students come to school to learn and not fuss. I love that fuss. Parents want the best for their children, and they will let you know respectfully. In my previous work, it was a daily battle with students, parents, and teachers, and sometimes principals. It was a fight-or-flight situation all the time. The part that bothered me the most was it wasn't a respect for anyone. I felt alone, because I was not sure who my friends were. I've been teaching 24 years. This is my 25th year in education. I have a BA in elementary education, an MA in administration, supervision, and educational leadership, and she's currently working on her PhD in education. I'm not new to this, I'm true to this. Another, I love that statement. I love seeing students learn and grow. I enjoy seeing students' faces light up when they get the right answers to a question or math, a math problem. Teaching is my love language. The more I can teach students to love coming to school to get the knowledge and excel is mind-blowing. Being at peace to teach in 191 is awesome. The biggest part for me is having curriculum to teach from. I don't have to create my lessons from scratch. The lessons already are done, and I have, all I have to do is decide how I want to teach the lesson and be creative with it. I was hired to teach at William Byrne as a third-grade teacher back in October. When I had an interview with Dr. Bonneville, I thought it was the worst interview I'd ever had. I'm not sure why. We talked about everything, and eventually the job, I was hired for the job. What I realized from that interview with Dr. Bonneville was that there are still down-to-earth principals who are out there for their staff. I've been, I have been here for three months, and my fire for teaching has returned. So you, so those narratives are powerful in that they show this, the span of the connection that we do have with the community. People are excited to be here and a part of it, and they're supported within that, whether you've been a part of the community for your entire career or life even, or you're new to the community. So that's something that I think is very special at William Byrne, and I was very grateful that they were willing to share those stories. So, next, positive, building that positive school culture. So at William Byrne, we rise. And that's more than a model, it's a foundation of our school culture. Through respect, integrity, safety, and engagement, students and staff create an environment where everyone feels valued and supported. Our PBIS efforts ensure that these values are not just taught, but modeled daily. Whether in the classroom, hallways, or beyond, students, staff demonstrate what it means to rise, reinforcing positive behaviors that foster a respectful and engaged learning community. By embracing rise, William Byrne empowers students to take ownership of their actions, build strong relationships, and contribute to a safe and inclusive school for all. And as I was putting this slide together, we just recently had a Skateville event, which was crazy. Fun, it was a lot of fun. But I was like, oh, what can I put on this slide? Well, I had forgotten, sadly, that our PTO had a shirt, and I originally had titled this Together We Rise. Well, here we have this shirt that says Together We Rise. So we see a lot of those here at William Byrne, and the kids absolutely love it. And then one of the things that we do, as I said here, is we model this behavior for our students of what our expectations are, and the staff, the staff are fully engaged in that process. So I have a short video that they created that I'd like to share with you.
Thank you. All right. So you can see the excitement. I was blown away at the fact that they pulled this together, our RISE team, and, I mean, they sang that song, so we had a lot of fun with that. Thank you, thank you. So now I am going to hand it over to Dr. Bradner.
Thank you. Thanks, Dr. Bonneville, for presenting on the power of our Tier One PBIS system as a way to support all students by helping them learn school-wide expectations and supporting school-wide social-emotional learning. I'm Renee Brainer, and I'm the principal at Sky Oaks Elementary.
And I'm Megan Gower-Close. I'm the Student Systems Leadership Specialist between Sky Oaks Elementary and Gideon Pond Elementary. Tonight, for Sky Oaks, we'd really like to showcase a Tier Two intervention within our MTSS, our multi-tiered systems of support, that we are really proud of. MTSS seeks to have multidisciplinary teams that use universal screening, family partnership in problem-solving, targeted supports and interventions, and the use of progress monitoring and data-driven decision-making for both academic and behavior interventions.
Our PBIS Positive Behavior Interventions and Supports Team works hard to build a strong community and culture for staff and students. Our Tier One initiatives include a community all-school morning meeting led by partnered grade levels. So for example, first and third grade classes have joined forces to facilitate our meeting tomorrow morning. We have PBIS tickets and bus ambassadors, and we also have bus SOR tickets that are specifically for positive bus behavior.
At Sky Oaks, one of our Tier Two behavior interventions that's become our standard work is check-in-checkout intervention. Sky Oaks has intentionally cultivated a culture in which staff are trained and supported in providing both the role of a mentor or a classroom teacher to students in check-in-checkout, and they enjoy it. It's an example of our caring community. So getting started with the check-in-checkout intervention, looks like the teacher has already connected with the family, has really partnered on what are some of the lagging skills we're seeing, or what might there be, for reasons why there's a bit of struggle in being able to engage in the classroom, or what are the barriers that maybe the kiddo's experiencing, how can we support? They consult with their collaborative teams, their teammates and teachermates. And if the student continues to have challenges, a teacher can complete a Google form that gets sent to our student success team. At that time, the teacher reaches out to the family to complete a home questionnaire, where we're really trying to get information about what the family sees of the strengths of their child, how we can help them best learn, any strategies that work at home, and the needs that the family may see at home as well. So students who appreciate connection with adults are the ones that we usually think are going to be best for check-in-checkout because of that morning check-in and afternoon checkout. If it's determined the right fit for intervention, we ask the teacher to collect baseline data before introducing the intervention. And then, of course, we're communicating with the family of how can we share the success? How can we partner with you? What's the best way to communicate with you and be flexible around that? A staff mentor for the student is chosen based on a variety of different things. It could be relationships that the student already has, maybe a previous teacher, as well as maybe a personality fit, who might be a great warm demander for a particular friend. Then the mentor and classroom teacher receive training materials, hand-on support for beginning the check-in-checkout program.
So the check-in-checkout is a Tier Two support, so it's for some students. And the way it works is that the adult checks in at the beginning of the day and then checks out, the same adult at the end of the day. The goal is to empower students, first through the goal-setting process for that day, and then skill development, not only to help them reach their goal... then skill development, not only to help them reach their goal, but also to help instill habits that will help them in their future education. Students get feedback and positive reinforcement throughout the day. The goal is to reinforce and acknowledge the positives as often as possible throughout the day and meet specific behavior goals, which in turn typically aligns with increased engagement in the classroom for their academic learning. A check-in checkout is a structured approach to provide consistent, positive adult attention and support to students who need a little extra guidance, um, to follow school-wide expectations. And we involve families by, um, asking them to celebrate the student's success. So when, on days when they're meeting their goals, to acknowledge those positives and to celebrate the days that they're really on target.
So having a couple of Tier Two interventions that we've really gained proficiency in allows us to intervene early and be more efficient in our interventions. The familiarity of the intervention also helps eliminate feelings of stress for our teachers who on top of supporting Tier Two and Tier Three needs are also teaching an entire class at a Tier One level. We track student progress in this intervention on a spreadsheet that allows us to see where they started, their baseline, the progress and allow for data-driven decisions to increase the intervention, maintain and hopefully graduate students off of check-in checkout.
And on our third slide, um, we wanted to showcase some of the data points. So this is a very data-heavy process, um, to continue to run check-in checkout with fidelity. The fidelity of our data collection and analysis is really one of the key component, components. We're really grateful to Kelly Zappar, um, our board-certified behavior analyst in 191, who worked specifically with, she worked with several buildings, with Sky Oaks as one of them. She's been helping assist us with calibrating our check-in checkout data sheets, helping with formulas, collection and graphs. Um, and then, uh, Anab Abto, who's our behavior EA, helps enter that data so that we have the information collected and, um, available to us in a timely manner. With this data, we get to measure the success of students both individually and how is check-in checkout working as a Tier Two intervention? Um, and you can see on our slides, so we have a kind of our data points for at the top in the middle is kind of an individual student's data. So we can see how, if they're above the black line, they're meeting their goal for the day, they're above that date. Um, we have, uh, on the left side, our fidelity check. So if our intervention isn't being successful, we go back and ask ourselves as adults, hmm, are we doing that the way we say we're doing that? Let's check our work here. And then, um, what it looks like for our data collection for the building. So you can see as of January 8th, our Tier Two check-in checkout, we had an average growth of 26% um, for individual students and a total growth of 78%, which ranged from 5% to 50%. And for us, one of our challenges was when you have identified a student that needs support, you want to just jump in and do it. And, um, for us, one of our goals was to make sure we always were starting with baseline data, which you actually collect before you start the intervention. So you know, so you're starting at a goal point tailored for that student. So thank you. With that, we're going to pass this on to Ron Elementary.
Good evening, Chair Wurde, Dr. Battle, members of the board. Thank you for the opportunity to share a little bit about Ron Elementary. I'd like to invite two guests, um, two fifth grade teachers, amazing teachers, Kara Slattery and Erin Hurdle.
Thank you for having us.
They will help share the, the wonderful experience that our fifth graders have at, um, at Ron Elementary. We are grounded at Ron in our mission and vision and we believe that we are an inclusive learning community working together to inspire curiosity, creativity and achievement. Everything that we do at Ron is connected to that vision and mission. We have a plethora of activities that we do, exciting enrichment activities that happen, wonderful leadership opportunities. But one of the things that is truly amazing is what is going on in our fifth grade. Over three years ago, these two amazing teachers came to me and said, we want to try something. We want to try something a little different. We have a vision, we have an idea and we, we want to do it. And when these two asked me, I say, yeah, let's do this. And, um, and our students are reaping the benefits. Our families are experiencing some tremendous growth, not only academic, which I plan to share with you, but just social, emotional leadership growth that is preparing them to be amazing citizens and successful middle school students. So I'll turn it over to these two to share, uh, we have three strategies, um, in this fifth grade experience.
I'm going to talk about collaboration and the best way that honestly share kind of what we do would be to bring our classroom to you or to have you come there and just kind of see what our kids and what we get to do every day. I will extend that invitation honestly anytime to just come in because it really is something you need to see and experience. Like Brad said, right, we came up with this idea, can we combine all of our fifth graders together in one classroom with two teachers and kind of team teach? And we had two sections at Ron. And so, um, he was all in and our whole goal, we wanted something unique, a unique learning space and a unique experience. And we happened to have walls that fold back and so we opened up, um, one of the walls and now two of the walls and we have this space where collaboration is like the name of the game. For us, the best part is we're collaborating all day long. So from the minute we get there in the morning, we're talking all day and what that allows us to do is kind of intervene real time, always with students, right? We're talking about what we're teaching, we're talking about this kid, we're, it, it's just constant, which is great. Because we can do that, right? We can meet the needs of so many, um, you know, diverse learners and, and the needs, right? We've got students who really perform anywhere from like a first grade level all the way up to a 10th grade level and how do you do that with one person? It's impossible. Um, we also collaborate with our ML and our special ed staff. So they are a part of what we do, but all day long, we just, we'd never go back, right? That. Another thing that's really cool is we have zero, um, missed instructional time because you never stop teaching because if something should arise or this kid needs help here or this, whatever comes up, um, the other one just continues and takes over, you know? And it's not something we sit and plan who's going to say what all day. We just do it and we have a blast. It's so much fun. Um, most CTs, right, our collaborative teams, um, meet once a week. They meet on Tuesday mornings. We meet every single day, all day, before school, during school, after school. It's just kind of constant, which I think is where a lot of our growth comes from. Our focus is on each kid, right? No matter where they are, they're here and our goal is just to inch every single individual student along that continuum, whether it's academically or socially. So we do a lot of different things with that. And projects, we do things like, you know, a lot of research projects. We have things like a living museum where our families all come in and enjoy that. We have a huge Ron Science Fair and all of our fifth graders are part of that. We do something called the Poetry Cafe, um, where the kids write and then perform poetry. We invite our families in for that. That was a really cool experience. And celebrate, we love to celebrate all the time. So we celebrate all year at Ron, especially in fifth grade. Um, and then we have a big fifth grade graduation, which we really kind of do up caps and gowns and the whole thing, um, just kind of celebrating their success. Again, Ron, Ron is, and our, our classroom is just kind of this giant family and we truly love to work and play together. So with that, I'll go to Erin.
Yep. All right. Um, so I would like to just speak a little bit about our just wonderful caring community. You can see on the slide that I'm going to speak about other things, but of course, um, you're going to hear this probably over and over from us, she already said it once, but our kind of our mantra is work hard and play hard. We have high expectations. The kids do incredible work. Um, and then of course, therefore we do, we do a lot of celebrations with that. Um, we work very hard to build, um, a very special community right from day one. Um, we pride ourselves in fostering a classroom community that cares for each individual as a whole, complete child, you know, every single part of them. Um, we come together every day together as one big classroom, as Kara mentioned, the walls are down. So we've even grown since we first started. We started as two and now we've, we've cut down another wall and now we've got three. Um, we've, we're getting more kids, so we had to have a bigger space, but it is a truly an incredible space. Um, we share, we learn, we struggle, we celebrate, we question, we laugh and of course, we play together every single day.
We laugh a lot.
From nine fifteen to four o'clock, yes. Um, we work very hard with high expectations. I mean, that's kind of our number one, extremely high expectations of our kids. And honestly, every single one of them live up to those high expectations that we have and they do amazing, wonderful work. We produce results, which Brad's going to kind of talk about some data, um, which we pride ourselves on. Our results are amazing, both academic results and also maybe even more importantly, again, the social results or the social, um, growth that those kids have, um, especially this crucial year, you know, the year before middle school. We talk about middle school from day one, September 6th.
They get sick of it.
And they do. We're getting you ready for middle school and they hear that message every single day. And I think that's important for them to hear, um, because that's what kind of drives everything. Um, again, we're all in this together, um, as this big, huge community. Right?
Yeah.
Um, along with the things again that are on the slide, I just want to share a couple of things that we do as a one giant caring community. We do do what's called Blaze Awards every week. Um, and we have been doing them now for, well, ever since we started this, but this year in particular, it has spread to a, a school-wide thing and the Blaze Awards are given every, um, Friday and we recognize four students. Um, one of the Blaze Awards is for hardworking, one is for determined, one is for considerate and one is for positive. And this kind of goes, goes along with our, um, school-wide goals with kind of our PBIS, um, team and things. And the kids look very forward to that. We have drum rolls every Friday before we announce the Blaze Awards and just the smiles and the celebrations again that come with those is amazing. Um, we do do, we've had a really, um, we've stressed and we've emphasized, especially in the last two years, just the emphasis of, of reading, um, not just, you know, the good old graphic novels, but really getting into all the different genres and, um, we keep track actually in the back of the room. Everyone has, um, a big bookmark of all the different genres and we actually have a requirement of so many books to read in all the different genres. And so it just forces them to maybe get out of their comfort zone a little bit with their books. Um, and we've seen really huge impacts, um, and results from that, um, reading. Um, daily lunch conversations is what we call, just a lot of turning and talking, um, both about academic things and of course, just different social things. Um, we do a weekly what I learned, um, and basically that's just kind of a weekly assessment on Fridays. I don't know if the kids really look forward to it, but they, they kind of do.
Well, it's like, it's time.
Yeah. But it's, you know, eight to 10 questions, just kind of review what we've learned that week, um, just to kind of keep it fresh in their heads. And then of course, those go home so parents can see too, um, exactly what we're learning, you know, each week on a daily, or on a weekly basis, I should say. Um, one of the big highlights also on Fridays, like tomorrow's just a fun day.
I know.
We do so much fun things on Friday. Um, we create, or I should say Kara creates an Animoto video, usually weekly. We take a ton of photos throughout the week, um, and we throw them into an, or she throws them into an Animoto and the kids just love watching their faces up on the screen.
And our families.
Yeah. We send it to our families, of course. Um, the last thing that I just want to mention as well, um, that our fifth grade, um, students just have the opportunity, um, you know, again, setting them up for middle school, um, a lot of things go into that and, and one of the big things is leadership and just letting them know and having the experience of different leadership roles, um, at Ron. Um, so they do patrols, they're in charge of patrols. Um, we have a student council, um, and along with the student council, we do monthly, um, activities and just different things, but then we also do a school store that the kids run, um, every single Wednesday morning. Um, so they help with, uh, selling of things, with the money, with the counting, just in interacting with all of the, the customers that they have. Um, we also do a Ron TV3 news broadcast every single morning, um, and the kids are, they're writers, directors, um, they're the broadcasters, um, and that's just fun to watch and that gets broadcast to the entire school every single, um, morning on that. Um, and then the last thing that I wanted to mention, because this is kind of new for us, but we've started almost kind of like a mentorship program, um, with our science fair process that's going on right now, where our fifth graders are meeting with, um, currently third and fourth graders, just to kind of mentor them and just kind of walk them through and help them with the science fair process because it can be very overwhelming. Um, and that's just been something.
But just to be, we're like, we've got to expand this. This is really cool. Like they're loving it, the kids love it.
So Brad, we're hoping?
Yeah.
We're hoping, we're just going to do it.
We're just going to do it and then we'll ask him later if it's okay.
Yeah.
So it's kind of how it works.
So again, I, we cannot stress enough, just the awesome things that are going on and please, please, please come and visit because we do love to share and, and brag about what's going on at our school.
Yeah, it's awesome.
Um, finally, just I'll quickly speak about, um, our high expectations. So we have high expectations, of course, right? Um, I believe whatever, you know, we believe, whatever you, kind of where you set the bar, kids will rise to it and so you keep kind of pushing that bar up and up and up. Um, and we do that for ourselves as well. If you know either one of us, we just don't settle for, you know, we've got to keep pushing ourselves. So we do that and we have that balance of play and fun and things like that. Um, we're always seeking kind of new things too. Um, with AI, we're really kind of getting jazzed up about that this year. I don't know, we haven't done a lot with it, but we're just kind of in this seeking to learn phase, but, um, we would love that to be a really huge component in our classroom. I think to serve like a diverse group of learners and when you have 60-some kids all in one room, how do you really meet those needs and do those things? And we do a lot of things creatively. Um, our classroom is not a sit and get, right? It's very active. There are kids working in groups and pairs and all the time and doing all kinds of things every day. Um, she mentioned our what I learns and again, those are those check-ins for kids, but it also informs, it lets us know what do kids know and are they reaching mastery of these, you know, grade level standards and what we expect and, you know, we look at those standards every week and we're like, well, what do we want it to look like? No, let's push it higher. No, they can do better, you know? And, um, we kind of push that a lot. Other than that, I don't know, we get a lot of feedback, right? And, um, we just believe once they get that feedback, student to student feedback or from us, they got the feedback, give them a chance to make it better, right? A lot of times, you know, kids will receive feedback and then that's it and they move on to the next thing and we're like, well here, okay, now let's try it again. Do, you know, whether it's the same thing or something similar, um, just to kind of get better and better. Yeah. What else? I don't know.
We could, we could go on and on and, but we're not going to. So we already did.
And the results, um, prove the work that's happening. Just to highlight a, a few things, we're experiencing, our fifth graders are experiencing some of the largest gains from fourth grade to fifth grade, um, uh, in their MCA scores. 16%, 18% jump from year to year of the same cohort of students. And I looked back in the previous year, it was 16% in reading and 34% in math growth from fourth grade to fifth grade on MCA. Uh, our students who are starting at benchmark or above, they're staying at benchmark or above. Our students that are below are making huge gains to get to benchmark. And it's the work that's happening in this classroom, the creativity, the passion, as you can tell. We're proud of what's happening and our school, um, really supports this greatness for our fifth graders. Thank you for the opportunity to share.
Thank you.
Thank you, um, for sharing. Are there any comments or questions from board members?
I can go, because Ron was last. Yeah, check out Ron. My, my daughter was a, is a proud, uh, fifth grade graduate of Ron Elementary. Um, and it is all true about the fifth grade class. I mean, she is, she really blossomed in her fifth grade and really set the course for sixth grade because she is doing awesome in the sixth grade at Nicollet. Um, she misses Ron, but she is very excited to be at Nicollet and, um, do, I think, she, yeah, the whole, whole fifth grade time was I'm getting ready for middle school. And, and it helped her learn how to be, take on a little more leadership, learn how to, I mean, I don't know what she did with math, but she's in honors math now, so it was pretty cool. Um, and then also, you know, having my son, um, part of his time at Burn too and, and hearing from all the great things at Burn and I can attest to that as well. And, um, did a lot of summer programming at Sky Oaks, so I just appreciate all of the different reports that we have received, um, and, um, really seeing the, the unique things that each of the schools do, um, in addressing the specific needs of each student and family in your schools.
Director Alt?
Thank you. Yes, thank you all. Love the school reports. Um, and I concur with Director Chester. It's, it is interesting to hear how each school is doing things differently and each school paints a very vibrant picture of, uh, learning and engagement and, um, expectations, high expectations across the board, um, which I really appreciate. For Sky Oaks, I have, I think a question for each of you. Um, Sky Oaks, on the check-in Sky Oaks, on the check-in and checkout, is that across all grades, pre-K to five?
It's all, I would say, all grades K through five. And I think most buildings have a check-in, checkout program of some kind. We just really felt proud of the consistency and the fidelity to which we've been able to put the program in place and really have some great student success with it.
And it was, it was really interesting to hear, too, about, you know, being proactive with getting the baseline data reduces the stress for the teachers, right? Because to your point, people see a situation that they can help, and sometimes getting that baseline data is the best way to be able to do that. So that was interesting. And I guess, was there any reason you don't do check-in, check-outs for preschool?
I think we just haven't, maybe, they kind of, they have some of their own systems in place right now. And I guess I don't have.
A small amount of day, they're, they're just a few hours each day.
Good point, yeah.
They're little.
But it's the time we just, it's just not the system right now.
And Director Alt, I would just say that we do have check-in, checkout in our middle schools as well, and our high schools are looking, and that Sky Oaks has really served as a model for our district, the way they're implementing.
Very cool.
It's really a research base, it's one of the premier research-based interventions for Tier Two behavior states.
And how long, on average, or there probably isn't an average, but the duration of a student's engagement with a teacher in that way?
It really depends on the student. I mean, there are some students who, you know, within a couple of months are already ready to, we actually taper off instead of just quit doing the intervention. And there are some students, in fact, this year, we have a student who liked it so much this year, he volunteered, he encouraged us that we should continue to look at it. So it's really tailored to the student's individual needs. And there's a lot, we, you know, it's like one system that we can rely on that's consistent, but then we can tailor it and individualize it a little bit in some ways as well. So, you know, we, it just depends on how the student's doing, what they're comfortable with. Sometimes a student might be on check-in, check-out. We phase it out, then maybe we are, hey, should we go back to this? We, this might be where we're at again. So we just keep, we just go with wherever the student's going to go, whatever they need, we're willing to figure out how to get to them.
Awesome. And then, did I have a question? I don't have a question for William Byrne, but I do have a question for Ron, for Cara and for the teachers.
Yeah.
Just curious, in terms of when you're doing the What Did I Learn This Week, what kind of responses do you get?
From the students or just in general?
From the students, yeah.
So at the top of it, it just says like, What I Learned, and it outlines our learning targets of the week.
Hello.
It just, at the top, it says What I Learned, and then it outlines all of our learning targets for the week, or those main ones that we're kind of working toward mastery, whether it's our GLGs or our standards, or, you know, the combination of both. And then we usually just have a couple of questions, kind of that go with it. It's meant to be a quick assessment, right? Like 10, 15 minutes on a Friday morning. They get that, we want to make sure they get that feedback right away, Friday afternoon to take home. But it's a written response. We've toyed with having it online as well, but we like the written. And then again, it goes home to our families, and they get to see it right away. And then they bring it back Monday. It's like the one thing that we actually ask weekly, bring this back signed, because we want to make sure, we have a newsletter and things, but that our families know, what are we learning, what are we doing, and how is your child doing?
In my mind, as you were describing it during the presentation, I was thinking, you know, what did I learn? We have academics, right? And we also have, well, what did I learn?
Yes.
About my friends or whatever.
And it's funny, because our last two questions, or two to three questions on it, are always social or self-reflective.
Gotcha.
You know, like, what challenged you this week? What was something you were excited about? You know, who is a friend? I mean, those are very questions.
So hold.
I stole the idea about 15 years ago from like somebody in Long Lake School District, and Bonnie Hauck actually mentioned it, and I was like, a version of, and I was like, I'm going to steal that idea. It was really cool. So, yeah, it's been great.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anyone else?
I did, I had a question.
Oh, Mary?
I just want to comment saying that I really like the idea of a collaborative classroom, like having the fifth grade classes together. And I was wondering if you guys were considering expanding to the other grade levels, that kind of setup?
That's been brought up a few times, but we really want to, we want to, we want to give our fifth graders this experience of, that's a little bit different. Now, at Ron, as well as all the schools in Burnsville, we're very collaborative in nature. I mean, it's, we all work together, all of our classroom teachers have collaborative teams, but also our special education teachers, our multilingual teachers, our learning specialists, all are part of kind of the mix. For our fifth graders, we wanted it to be a bit unique and a bit different. So we created this collaborative space.
Thank you.
All right, well, my turn. Once again, I just, this is like, you know, one of my favorite presentations is hearing from our, our schools. So Dr. Ronnevoe, I'm kind of sad, because this is the first time in nine years that I don't have a student at William Byrne. So just, I really enjoyed the presentation. Is that song on TikTok?
It's very catchy. We've got one for the lunchroom that's going to be coming up, too.
Okay, and I have to tell my daughter about it, because she'll be like wanting to hear it, I'm sure. But, yeah, just, yeah, missing hearing about stuff going on at William Byrne, but just very much, you know, love hearing about the teachers there. My daughter had Miss Cownan as her kindergarten teacher. Great teachers at William Byrne, and just a very special school. Dr. Bradner, I had a question about the check-in, check-out. I can't remember if it was in the presentation or not, but did it say how many students were in that intervention?
I can't give you a number off the top of my head, but it varies as students move in and out.
Okay.
So, but when we talk about our positive behavior interventions and support, you're probably looking at 15% of a school population that you would typically need a Tier Two or Tier Three intervention.
And I was going to ask, like, what percentage of, like, the student population, too? So, yeah. Do you find that there's an influx during, like, certain times of the, the school year? Like, where it's more?
Well, you know, I think, you know, we do a really good job of trying to make sure that students have what they need right away at the beginning of the year. So sometimes we know about, a little bit about them from the previous school year. Sometimes, you know, we start and we kind of are learning, okay, this is different. We like to start fresh and give everybody a new chance, a new teacher, a new everything, and see how they're doing, but we want to be there to support them right away. But I would say, you know, as we go, as we go on during the school year, I just would say it fluctuates.
Okay.
It's just, you know, whatever kids need, and it's like, okay, we're ready to put something in place and collect our baseline data and have something ready to go right away. And when they're being successful, we want to be able to taper that off for them as quickly as possible as well. So one of the great things about the Sky Oaks staff is their willingness, not only as a classroom teacher, to help keep track of that data and to celebrate the positives with kids in the classroom, but also they're paired with that mentor teacher. And so having teachers who, whether it's a first grader who goes to a kindergarten teacher or a second-grade teacher, just the willingness of everyone to chip in. And I feel like at Sky Oaks, we just really have a community of, we're all in this together, we're all here for every single student, and we're going to do whatever it takes to help them be successful.
That's great to hear. Very, very glad that you shared that, that strategy that you're using at Sky Oaks. So then my question for the Ron teachers regarding your community classroom. I, I think that's such a great, fresh idea to, to have the students in that combined classroom. So I guess my questions are, do you see like a difference? Or what did you notice that was like a change for the students when you went from like having them separated to having them together? As far as like, did you find the students being more supportive of each other? Like, what were some of the bigger things that you noticed when you write, like, right away when you went to that model? Like, what were the?
I think it's like any other community, right? When you get together, and there's just a positive energy. So it's energy, and it's all positive, and you're working together, and you're collaborating, and you're playing, and it truly, like, I know we, it's so cliche to say like one big family, but that's kind of how Ron is. And then just to really contain that in our classroom. You know, you're always at the beginning, and you're like, oh, so-and-so in my class, I hope so. Right? Like your friends, but here, like, just everyone is together. Yeah, you don't have to worry, and it's just, like she said, it's just fun. And because everyone is together in one room. And I think with all the two, the different activities and things that we do, whether it's projects or play or just the way we organize and structure and do so many different things throughout the year, every kid loves every kid in the room. You know what I mean? I mean, it is rare, right? There's, like, we don't have behaviors in our room, right? Like, because it's engagement, and it's, it's fun, and it's, you know, it's tricking them into learning in the, in the wonderful ways that it is, right? But that's what it is. And, you know, teaching is a song and a dance, right? And you're, you're trying to do all the things in this just such a clever way. And hopefully, kids, you know, kind of grab onto that. So, you know, we notice a lot of things, but we, more than anything, and Leslie, you kind of spoke to it, right? But just that opportunity for leadership and, and role models for other students as well. But just, but, I mean, they, they can work with anyone, talk to anyone, and there's never like, oh, I don't want to be with that. You know what I mean? We just don't have that. We don't accept it or tolerate it either, but we just don't. Yeah, I'm also going to add in the word, yeah, I'm going to add in the word like comfortable. Like, just, everyone is just, is comfortable, I think, because whether they have their best friend or, I mean, just everyone together. And, and the way that we have our room set up, too, is we don't, we change seats constantly, too. So it's not like you're going to be never by anyone or whatever. Like, we're, everyone is always in different spaces, and we have our tables where they learn, but then we also have all these different.
Flexible seating couches and chairs and things, and so that, you know.
So it gives a lot of opportunity to engage with a lot of different people around the room as well, which I think they like. Come see it.
Now, you're inviting me, so maybe I might.
Yeah, you had mentioned, you did have, we had a couple of teachers in Gideon Pond that want to do it, and they're like, how do we break down a wall? And I'm like, I don't know. I'm like, good luck, but they really want to do it. And we're like, well, at least come visit and see, and then hopefully, but.
Well, you have to break it down, but then like, like encompass yourself, because we still have safety.
Right, right, right. That committee was, they've got a five-year plan, I just heard about that, so we'll see.
I think the one thing I would add about the, the group being together, though, too, is that even amongst the students, when they are switched around the room or put in little bundles, if you will, is the, the amount of peer support that happens in those settings. You know, so there's moments where, you know, Violet might have, you know, helped coach another person with a certain problem, but then she and her might have needed help, too. And so just to have that ability to do that in, in that setting, too, with all their peers. You know, that's, you know, sometimes they need help, sometimes they can give help, and.
All the time.
Yeah, and we always have 10, 15 kids willing to jump in and help.
At least, yeah.
Yeah, always.
That's just, I mean, just love hearing all this, this is great. Thanks, thanks again for coming.
Thank you for, yeah, thanks for having us.
Okay. We will now receive a report from Vice Chair Alt about the mid-year review for Superintendent Dr. Battle.
Thank you, Chair Webb. On January 23rd, 2025, the District 191 School Board and Superintendent Dr. Battle met in a closed session for her annual mid-year review. Participating in the session were Chair Webb, Clerk Hume, Treasurer Chester, Director Anderson, Director Mickelson, Superintendent Dr. Battle, and myself. To share the history of the mid-year evaluation, in 2023, the board came to the decision to provide a mid-year review in the same way we conduct the final performance review, in a closed session for efficiency and consistency. This mid-year review is designed to allow Dr. Battle to understand any adjustments that can be made before the final performance review in June. The closed session consists of evaluating Dr. Battle's progress with her personal goals for the current school year. We also share feedback on her performance and areas of strengths and areas of improvement. There are three personal goals that Superintendent Dr. Battle set for herself during the 2425 school year. First, professional development goal. Supports and model actions and promote cultural proficiency that is showing a commitment to lifelong learning in serving the needs of cultural groups. Measures of progress. Participation in professional development and experiences that increase my competency to generate, to generate cultural appropriateness in my affect and behavior. In partnership with the school board, model and create conditions that support our families. Possible quantitative measures to gauge our, our impact may be family survey satisfactory or favorable results for the following questions will remain stable or increased. Our families feel welcome at my, so these are the, the measures. Our family feels welcome at my child's school. Students at my child's school are fairly, are treated fairly, no matter their race, primary language, or socioeconomic background. My child sees themselves in the curriculum. The ISD 191 School Board and Administration do a good job of involving community leaders, parents, and interested citizens in decisions about our schools. Develop methods to assess the reasons why families are choosing to enroll their children in 191, and the experiences of families with long-term enrollment who choose to keep their children enrolled in our schools. So that was the first one. Second, communications and community engagement. Complete action steps related to superintendent's role for technology levy renewal campaign. Bring forward design team recommendations for school name changes, if any, for board review and complete next steps for implementation. Operational management. Continued implementation of the District Open Facilities Plan. Components include, continue to vet, lease, and purchase options for Sioux Trail Elementary and MW Savage. Develop recommendation to the 191 Board of Education for the use of proceeds from the final sale of Metcalf Middle School and Diamond Head Education Center Outlet. And then the last personal goal, curriculum development. Continue with the implementation of Phase Two for the profile of a learner. The profile of a learner describes the knowledge, skills, abilities, and mindsets our students should learn as they progress through our schools. The areas are academically ready, civic-minded, culturally proficient, financially ready, future-ready, life-ready, and workplace-ready. The next steps include, the next steps will include, curriculum review process will identify areas of the profile of a learner for each academic department. Secondary professional development will include teachers developing common assessments that will include assessments for profile of a learner. During our closed session, we collectively discussed growth areas in addition to areas of strength. Topics included accountability, communications, and community engagement. Moving forward, we discuss Dr. Battle adding accountability structures for direct reports. This ends my report. Thank you.
Are there any questions or comments from the board? Next, we will receive a report from Merriam-Brady Student Board Representative.
Thank you. So I wanted to start out with February's report with some information from our affinity groups. ASA, our Asian Student Association, held, held a celebration this past week for our Lunar New Year this Wednesday. They served tea, coffee, decorated some lanterns, and also played a traditional version of a gambling game, but with candy, not money. The Black Student Union also held a meeting this Thursday discussing and celebrating Black History Month. They're currently prepping and holding auditions for their upcoming showcase, which will be held at the end of the month. They've also been sharing some important facts over the announcements this month, and displaying facts about African-American history across the school televisions and display cases. As for Burnsville Strong, they're currently making valentines for underappreciated workers around the district. This includes bus workers, custodians, kitchen, and kitchens workers. They're also working with a student support team to make sure students know who the counselors and psychologists at our school actually are and where to access them. Also, theater is having their opening night tonight for their show, Clue. So they've worked very, very hard to put together the show, and you can come stop by for the following dates, excuse me, February 13th through the 15th, and February 21st at 7:00 p.m., and February 22nd for a matinee at 2:00 and a later show at 7:00 p.m. Also, a drum line competed at Osteo High School. Also, a drum line competed at Osteo High School and placed second against 11 other schools in their first competition of the season. More good news from BHS students was from the speech team who held a competition last week and that Burnsville had four finalists. Faven took third in exemplary speaking and seventh in impromptu. Winston took third in impromptu. Peggy took third in dramatic interpretation and Olivia took seventh in prose. Our choir is also continuing its tradition of selling vallograms for Valentine's Day. So these are basically singing telegrams that will go out on Friday and involve the choir coming to students' classrooms and singing to those who are given a valogram. We also had our Snow Week Assembly two weeks ago. Snow Week began with many different groups from around the school performing in the gym. Some of these groups included Burnsville Theater, Swing, Drum Line, Basketball, Weightlifting, Swimming, Girls and Boys Volleyball, the Robotics Clubs, and some others. Um, another event at this assembly was the classes competing in a series of challenges, like one where the teacher's, teacher's team beat all of the grade levels. And we also had some really, really intense rounds of dodgeball that everybody got pretty excited for. And then that week ended with a neon dance. Finally, I'm excited to let you guys all know that our alternate student representatives, McKinley Shannon and Shana Zgraz, will have a chance to present their own reports at a few of the future board meetings. This concludes my report.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Thank you, Miriam. Now we will, we'll receive a report from Dr. Teresa Battle, Superintendent.
Thank you Chair Webb and members of the board. Each year, there are various recognition days or weeks for different groups of staff members who are central to the work we do as public schools. January 20th through 26th, for instance, was paraprofessional recognition week called educational assistance here in District 191. They are essential partners with teachers and school administrators, providing direct academic and other support to students. You can get a good feel for how important these people are and how much care and skill goes into their work by watching two recent videos on our YouTube channel featuring Jack Tillman and Amane Abto and their journeys as EAs in 191. Last week was National School Counseling Week, a chance to recognize the tremendous impact school counselors make each day helping students achieve school success and to make post-high school plans. When we talk about student agency as one of our core values, our counselors are at the heart of helping students plan and prepare for the futures they want. They also embody our core value of inclusive partnership, bringing together families, staff members, students, and resources in ways that lead to success for all learners. Coming up next week on February 19th is School Bus Driver Appreciation Day. Especially during these winter months, we know how much we rely on bus drivers to get students to and from school safe, safely. Plus, for many students, their bus driver is their first and last adult connection to school every day. Drivers can and they do set the tone for students and their partnership with school staff can make all the difference in creating a safe, welcoming atmosphere on the bus. Lastly, while there are recognition days and weeks for many different groups that we're sure to highlight through the year, today marks the 100th day of the school year. Many of you are very familiar with kindergartners celebrating their 100th day. Um, this celebration provided an opportunity for staff here at Diamond Head to work together on an act of thanks for staff who work directly with students. Earlier this week, we put together gift baskets that were placed in staff lounges today. Just some small treats and goodies to express appreciation for the work they do. There is so much dedication, skill, and experience and knowledge to go along with tremendous passion and deep caring with our staff members. I don't think it's possible for me to say it too much, but whether it's the 100th day of the year or your designated day or any other day, I am exceedingly grateful to be colleagues with the staff members of our district. And that concludes my report.
Do board members have any questions or comments? Thank you, Dr. Battle. Lastly, we will receive reports from board members. Do any board members wish to share a report? Just a reminder that we will have committee reports on our agenda at our next meeting. We will now move to the business portion of our meeting. We will start by approving the consent agenda. Although board action is required, it is generally unnecessary to hold a discussion on these items. In the event a board member wishes to discuss an item, that item will be removed, will be moved to, uh, for separate consideration. Do board members wish to remove any items from the consent items? Is there a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda?
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume.
Second.
Second by Director Chester. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, say nay. And the motion carries unanimously. In the first item under new business, we are being asked to consider initial approval of an extended field trip for the robotics team to Houston, Texas on April 15th through the 20th of 2025. Presenting tonight's recommendation is Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, Coaches David Peters, and Tanya Peters, and Parents Vanessa and Damian Goberhand. Welcome, everyone.
Thank you Chair Webb. Superintendent Battle, Directors of the Board, I'm here to, um, recommend that the board consider approval, initial approval for a robotics extended field trip request to Houston, Texas, April 15th through the 20th. Um, and here's, uh, here's some of the members of our leadership team to share a little bit more.
Thank you. Thank you Superintendent Battle and the School Board. Uh, I'm Dave Peters, head of FRC Robotics, and then Tanya is with me FTC Robotics. Um, so we haven't qualified for Worlds yet, but we need to set up the preliminary. We'll be flying to Houston, Texas on Monday or Tuesday, and we'll probably go see NASA on Tuesday. We get to go in there usually. We have actually a lot of people, alumni from here that work there and they get us, um, gets a tour that other people can't get, which is very educational for the kids. Then on Wednesday, we'll set up our, our field and on Thursday, we'll practice with other teams. There's approximately 700 teams there competing from across the world, China, Houston, all over Texas. And, um, Thursday, Friday, and Saturday, we compete and we fly back on Sunday. Um, just, we've been to Worlds in 15, 19, 23, and 24. 23 was our best year. We got fifth in the world, um, which is very exciting for the students. And, um, and with that, I'll pass it along to, uh, one of my top kids, Aiden, and his parents.
Our son Aiden has been part of the Burnsville Robotics Program for four years now. Um, he is, um, not the most social child and robotics has opened his world to, um, just making new friends, um, learning new skills, uh, learning problem solving and how to lead and, um, stay on task. Um, it would mean the world to the kids to go to this, um, competition and represent Burnsville High School. Um, it would give them a chance to showcase their talent and their robot that they've worked so hard on and compete with other kids, um, at their skill level. Um, win or lose, it would be a great experience for them.
Thank you.
So for, for us, it's kind of a little biased that we like the program so much, but for me personally, no. The roads has been paved through robotics for Aiden, for his career paths, everything from mechanical engineering to electrical engineering to computer program. It's really, it's some of the most practical skills you can learn. And going to Worlds and having, went at Worlds the last two years, we've seen 150 to 200 different schools that are there that are also presenting opportunities because they're there. It's really one of the best experiences. Like if you could, it's kind of equate going to Worlds like seeing the Super Bowl. The opportunities that are there, like how big it is, like we take over a whole convention center. And to see these kids come together and we literally had, it was 630 teams from across the world that was there last year. And so you literally see all cultures coming together. And even though these kids are in direct competition, they will do anything that they can to help each other and help their robots succeed, even if they know like the next match, they could be very well against them. So that collaborative skills that they learn and what they're able to show through worldwide, not just within like our district or our country, it's been an amazing experience. And for them to have that opportunity to go and not only see from their state, their country, see from around the world, it's an experience that you can't, it's second to none.
Thank you. Tanya, something to add?
It wasn't just 630 teams. It was, and it wasn't just one floor of the building. Uh, 630 teams was just the big robotics teams, like the FRC group. There was also FTC, which is the smaller, smaller robots. Um, what was there like 125 of those teams from across the coun, across the world? And then there was First Lego League, which is fourth graders through seventh or eighth grades that was also down there. You've got three floors of this building completely taken over by all of these kids, amazing kids. To see their excitement and to look, the look in their eye when they first see the fields. It's just amazing. It's every time we go down there even, after being down there, this, you know, we've been down there, what, three times, I think David and I have. And just the awe, just to look at the space that, that they've given us and just those kids' excitements, that's, that's what's important. And what they've learned over the years as well. Aiden is one of my kids on the small robotics teams for FTC that's having a competition here at Burnsville High School as well this weekend. So please come cheer us on.
So we're hosting the state tournament this weekend.
State tournament.
So we'll have kids from schools across the state.
Yeah.
And we do have a great shot of being one of the winners, walking away and qualifying for Worlds again, so.
Sorry, I had to plug that, you know? Big opportunity for Burnsville to host the state tournament, so.
Is there a motion to make an initial approval of the robotics extended field trip to Houston, Texas?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson.
Second.
Second by Director Mickelson. Is there any discussion? Director Alt.
Well, I'm wishing you luck. Hopefully, hopefully you're returning to Texas again.
Yes.
And wishing you all the best. Thank you.
Thank you.
Um, uh, yes, good luck as well.
Thank you.
You're all welcome this weekend to stop by at any moment and check it out.
Sounds good.
Thank you. Thank you.
Um, oh, all, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, say.
Thank you.
The motion carries unanimously. Next, we are being asked to consider an initial approval of an extended field trip to the, uh, DECA team to Nationals in Orlando, Florida in April. Presenting the recommendation this evening will be Dr. Chris Belmont, Assistant Superintendent, and Maggie Mayernick, teacher, uh, and the DECA student officers.
Okay, thank you Chair Webb. Per Policy 610, anytime our students may be missing, um, three or more days of school, uh, they present formally for initial approval. This particular, um, field trip with Supervisor Maggie Mayernick, who, um, incidentally was just recently named one of the top 142 nominations for Minnesota Teacher of the Year, and also she serves as DECA advisor. And we have a couple of her students here to present about our trip to Orlando, Florida, April 25th through 29th, 2025.
Good evening, members of the school board. Thank you for allowing us to speak tonight. My name is Asher Mahmoud and to the left of me, this is my other DECA president, Cameron Moore. Uh, we are here as representatives of our school DECA chapter to request, um, approval for students who qualify at our state competition to travel to DECA International Career Development Conference held from April 25th to April 29th. This is an incredible opportunity for our students to represent our club at the highest level, network with industry professionals, and develop valuable business skills and leadership skills. We understand that attending Nationals will require students to miss school. However, DECA members are committed to staying on top of their coursework. We will work closely with our teachers to complete assignments in advance and stay current with our classwork while we're away. I'm going to pass it over to my other DECA president, Cameron Moore.
Hi. Uh, so we recognize that, uh, potential expenses are a concern and our chapter has developed an ongoing fundraising plan to cover costs. Uh, in addition, we are organizing more fundraising events, uh, such as fast food night and potentially product sale. We also want to highlight that the DECA organization periodically provides financial support for clubs to, uh, send representatives to competitions. Uh, for example, our chapter registration fees were reduced from 500, or by $500, uh, for a grant awarded from DECA to help cover expenses for our state competition. Uh, so periodically, there are scholarship opportunities that individual DECA members can take advantage of as, uh, as well. So this trip is a once-in-a-lifetime experience for many of our DECA students, um, and aligns with our school's commitment to career readiness and leadership development. We appreciate your time and consideration and we hope for your approval to move forward with planning this incredible opportunity for our DECA members. Thank you.
Is there a motion to make an initial approval of the DECA program's extended field trip to Orlando?
So moved.
Moved by Director Alt.
Second.
Second by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? Director Alt.
Wishing you well.
Thank you.
Um, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously.
Thank you.
Thank you so much. Thank you, good luck.
Up next, we will begin our candidate selection process to fill the school board vacancy. This vacancy is due to the resignation of Director Mersal on January 7th, 2025. In 2024, the HF 4772 elections bill included a new provision effective July 1st, 2024 that states that if a school board vacancy occurs less than two years before the end of the term, no special election is required and the vacancy can be filled by board appointment. The Board of Education received four applications total, but one of the applicants lived just outside our district boundaries, so by law is ineligible to serve. Last night, the board held a work session to interview our three remaining candidates. I would like to direct your, to direct attention to the materials in the board packet that outlines our detailed selection process. However, I will share a brief overview at this time. We will start with the selection process. Each board member can just cast just one affirmative vote. The exam, for example, a board member who casts an affirmative during the roll call vote for candidate A cannot then cast an affirmative roll call vote for candidate B. For each vote, Sarah Olson Dickhausen will be asked to call roll and when each board member's name is called, they have two options for a response. The first option is that the member chooses to respond in the affirmative with aye. The second option is to say, I am not using my affirmative vote at this time. Again, each member can only use one affirmative vote throughout the process. When we have reached a majority voting affirmatively for a preferred candidate, then we will move forward with the next item on our agenda, which will be to adopt a resolution to appoint the candidate to fill the vacancy. With that, are there any nominations?
I would like to nominate Tyler Saxi. I second.
If, wait, okay, so they were supposed to do a roll call vote?
No, it was a nomination, then I second.
It says after a second, if motion and second are made, hold call, hold roll call vote. Okay, okay. vote. Okay, okay.
Do we have to, oh, so, so it's just a single, one at a time?
I'm not using my vote at this time.
Director Mickelson?
I'm not using my vote at this time.
Director Alt?
Aye.
Chair Burr?
Aye.
I'm not using my vote at this time.
Aye.
Three affirmative and three withholding.
Okay. Oh, are there any other nominations?
I would like to nominate John Boyko.
A second.
I'll start on, I'll start on the other side backwards, so I'll start.
I already used my vote, right?
Correct.
So I'm not using my affirmative vote at this time.
Aye. Yes.
Chair Burr?
I'm not using my affirmative vote at this time.
Director Alt?
I am not using my affirmative vote at this time.
Aye.
Director Mickelson?
Aye.
We have three affirmative.
Now we have discussion. This is where we can have discussion if you want. Um, okay. I will open this up for board members to share their thoughts on the nominees. Okay. Does anybody want to make, start out by making some comments?
I, I'm happy to start. I'm trying here. I think for my thoughts on Tyler Saxi, I think I appreciated his having both a business and education kind of background in his life. I appreciated that he talked affirmatively about our pathways program and seemed very knowledgeable with that. Additionally, I think he had a very good understanding of what it means to be on a board, what a board does, and the commitment that it would take.
Um, I, okay. I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Are you going to say something? I think both of these candidates are very strong. I will say that. What I liked about Jen, I liked that she's someone who really understands, I think, the perspective, the importance of public education from a teacher's perspective, which is not something we've had on this board in a while. I think that's something that all of us are or have been parents of students in the district, which is a perspective. But I also think it's good to consider other perspectives as well. So for me, that was, that was one thing. And I, I mean, like I said, they're both very strong candidates.
I can go next. I, I agree that, I believe that we have two very strong candidates. And what I appreciated most from Jen was her two-minute promotion of the district. I also appreciated, and what stood out most to me was just the, the, the passion and understanding of the values of our district, of the diversity of our students, and, and her response in terms of transparency in term, in, I'll speaking as one voice of the board. But those are the three things that stood most up for me.
I'll go next. I, I agree, Scott. We're very fortunate to have two very strong candidates to consider. It was clear to me that both of them had their hearts and their minds caring and supportive of public education and our students and our school community, and both clearly understood best practices in being a board member. Speaking with one voice was one thing that I had, had noticed as well. Listening and moving forward as one to be able to share our why behind our decisions. So it was really close for me. Jen obviously brings expertise and knowledge in education in working with students and colleagues and a clear will for the district, for sure. I, I do have, I do have a concern about a possible conflict of interest, depending on what the conversation might be. She has, you know, shared that she is clearly applying for this position as a parent and as a community member, and that was clear, absolutely. I nominated, and I support Tyler, because during his interview, Tyler fluently connected the dots between the mission, our values, in addition to the budget shortcomings, and concerns, recent concerns of late as related to the budget. He impressed me as someone with the experience and business acumen to step into this role of leadership and fiduciary responsibility. He communicated a good understanding of the time commitment and roles and responsibilities of a school board member, and ultimately, he impressed me as someone that could step into this role as much as anyone really can to be effective on day one.
So I agree with, oh, wait, sorry. I'm sorry. I'm so sorry.
I guess I would just like to say that, you know, the reason that I supported Jen for the position is kind of much what Scott was saying, is a, expanding the skills and experiences on the board. We have experienced members on the board who are experienced in, in budget, and, and I think also just in terms of, of budget, we'd have somebody that can see it from another perspective and with a slightly different lens. You know, definitely her enthusiasm for the district, her ability to effectively communicate her perspectives, her experiences, and that enthusiasm, I thought was very effective and very good. And, and again, I just thought that it was an opportunity to bring in a perspective that I think might be very valuable. You know, I definitely understand what you're saying, Director Alt, but I just felt that, you know, and maybe it is an assumption on my part that, that it is, it's like being on a jury, you, you can separate those two, you know, and she's not a teacher in our district, so, you know, and that that's why it could, it could very definitely bring a valuable and important perspective.
Sorry, I keep forgetting there's some people on the board. Did you go to the radio? I'm sorry. Okay. So, yes, I agree with everybody. They, they are very strong candidates, both of them. I liked both of them. There's just some things that kind of sway me more towards Tyler. He, he was very much, you know, an advocate for public education. I liked the things he said about that, where, you know, where he talked about, you know, going to school in Madison and, you know, you know, why he's a proponent for that, just in, just talking about his experience, you know, in business. I think he's got some qualities there that would be an attribute to the board. There were, you know, the things he talked about with, you know, just prioritizing things as far as budgetary items. I just liked his perspective there. And then when he was talking about, you know, the future ready and focusing on, you know, our students, I think that's, you know, you know, something we should be, you know, keeping in mind when we're talking about attracting, you know, students to the district. And a focus that we should have is to be, you know, future ready. Let's see. The passion, I like that he talked about the passion as well. I, I think all those things that are about Jen are great things. I do, I do agree that, that she's got a lot of great attributes, but I do share Director Alt's concern. So, um, okay, let's, can we call a, another roll call vote for the first person that was nominated?
Tyler Saxi?
Yep.
Start with Director Hume?
I'm going to hold on to my vote for a minute.
Director Mickelson? Director Alt?
Aye.
Chair Burr?
Aye.
Director Chester?
I'm going to hold my vote.
And Director Anderson?
Aye.
We have four in the affirmative for Tyler Saxi and two withholding their vote.
So we can move on to that.
Now we can do that.
Okay. We can now move to the resolution. Having Tyler Saxi receiving a majority of the affirmative votes, at this time, I will take a motion to adopt a resolution to appoint Tyler Saxi to the vacant District 191 Board of Education position.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Chester. Is there any discussion?
I just appreciate the conversation that we just had. It was a really good problem to have, too.
Indeed. And I will just say, if Jen is watching, I would encourage you to consider running in the future.
Indeed.
Think you'd be great.
Absolutely.
Having been moved by Director Hume and seconded by Director Chester, Clerk Hume, would you please read the resolution?
Yes. That the Board of Education adopts the following resolution filling a school board vacancy by appointment, whereas a vacancy exists in the office of school board member with the term expiring the first Monday in January 2027, and whereas the vacancy occurred on January 7th, 2025, in the third year of the vacant term, and whereas Tyler Saxi meets the qualifications established by Minnesota law to serve as a school board member. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of Education of Independent School District 191, State of Minnesota as follows. Pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 123B, 09, subdivision 5B, Tyler Saxi is hereby appointed to fill the vacancy and to serve the remainder of the unexpired term. The appointment shall be effective 30 days after the adoption of this resolution unless a valid petition to reject the appointee is filed with the school district clerk pursuant to Minnesota Statutes, Section 123B, 09, subdivision 5B, within that 30-day time period.
It is with pleasure that I announce that we have officially appointed.
I think we have, we have to vote.
Oh, I'm sorry.
One more vote.
It's a lot of voting for one thing.
I'm so out of my element right now.
Sarah, will you call the roll?
I'll start back around the other side. Director Anderson?
Yay.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Sorry.
She's a gay.
Chair Burr?
Aye.
Director Alt?
Aye.
Director Mickelson?
Aye.
Director Hume?
Aye.
Thank you. The resolution has been duly passed and adopted. Okay. All right, now I can see it. It is with pleasure that I announce that we have officially appointed Tyler Saxi to be the newest board member to serve on the District 191 School Board. Thank you to all of the candidates who have applied and offered to serve our students and school community. Next, we will consider requesting, next, we will consider requesting a revised one digital fee disclosure and statement. I will be presenting this recommendation tonight. This is to state our request for a revised fee and scope disclosure laid out in the format outlined in the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021. The disclosures are intended to provide the responsible plan fiduciary with sufficient information to assess the reasonableness of the compensation to be received and potential conflicts of interest that may exist as a result of a covered service provider receiving indirect compensation from sources other than a, other than the plan sponsor. A sample form has been attached to the board packet materials. Is there a motion to approve the request for a revised one digital fee disclosure, fee disclosure and statement?
So moved.
Moved by Director Anderson?
Second.
Second by Director Alt. Is there any discussion? Director Hume?
So you mentioned during your introduction, this is from a 2021 law. Is this not something that has existed? Like, why, why is it coming to us now?
Because I requested an updated fee and scope in 2023. It was not review, I'd not got any chance to, well, it was supposed to have been reviewed by the attorney, it had not been. And so I just had, it was just reviewed by Maggie.
Right. But I guess my question is, if the law's been in existence since 2021, we don't have one, or you haven't seen it? I'm not understanding what, what the request is.
We have never gotten the fee and scope. The district has never gotten.
And they are obligated to provide that, and they haven't done so?
Yes.
Hmm. Okay, I have another question.
Okay.
Typically, a request like this would come to us from the superintendent or her staff. I notice it's coming from you. What's, I wonder, what's the reason for that?
I was directed by our attorney.
The attorney, oh, sorry.
Go ahead.
The, the attorney recommended that we.
It came forward as a board action.
No, but the attorney noticed this and, and contacted the board to take action, or how did, how did, how was the attorney informed and involved?
Because I requested a copy of the fee and scope disclosure. I noticed that it was not in the correct format. I asked her to look at it and review it. I said, we need it to be, we need to request that it's in the correct format, and she said. said to bring it forward as a board action.
What's the difference in the format?
It needs to specifically outline the actual commissions.
Okay. And that's not in what we've received from them previously?
No, it is not.
And why is that?
I could not answer that.
Can Dr. Battle answer it?
Thank you, Director Hume, for the question, Chair Werb, and members of the board. When I, when the request was made, there was one previous one that was given. The attorney said, public schools were not required, but the board could ask for it. And so, we will ask them for it, and they'll put it in the format.
So something that typically, public schools are not required, they're exempt from the law typically?
That was our understanding, right. But a board can ask for it.
Can ask, though it's not required.
Is it the same attorney?
That's helpful.
The same attorney?
Yes.
Okay.
Yes. So that's why I think you received, bring it to the board.
And what we hope to accomplish by this?
You can request it.
I'm...
That we don't, for information that we don't already have?
I'll read this again. The disclosures are intended to provide the responsible plan fiduciary with sufficient information to assess the potential conflicts of interest that may exist as a result of a covered service provider receiving indirect compensation from sources other than the plan sponsor. It's about being forthcoming about getting commissions and basically that there's nothing illegitimate going on.
Do you have a reason to believe, to think that there might be? I withdraw my question.
I don't know. That's why we, we, this is why they, this is why there was the law. So that it's to provide transparency.
Do we know whether school districts request the same type of documentation from their vendors? Since apparently, school districts are typically exempt from it?
Maggie said that it's something that should be, it's, yes, from what she made it sound like.
Okay.
Is this part of a new quote that we're receiving?
No, this is just, it's a, it's something that they are supposed to, they're providing it as disclosure. It's a disclosure.
I'm just, I'm just curious because it's like, are we, are we, are we shopping around and that we're getting RFPs and that that wasn't included in their proposal, or is this, is this backtracking to?
This, this has nothing to do with that.
Okay.
Nothing related.
So, if I can clarify?
Yes.
So, just to make sure I'm understanding this. So, because there is a law in existence requiring this information to be shared, that is why this is coming forward as a formal request, because we have been advised by the attorney that this is the way that it's done.
Yes.
And the timing of it is just happenstance. It's two separate, regardless of what else might be happening in conversations around insurance, this is something that, it's just coming forward now because of conversations that you had had?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
Would other potential vendors be providing that same statement when putting in proposals?
Every broker is required to provide this. It's part of the, the law.
But not, not required for school districts?
Right, because we're exempt from ERISA, but...
Just to be clear.
Yes.
Okay.
But...
It's standard operating procedure.
Yes. But in Maggie's recommendation, they should provide it.
Remind me, now you said it's a separate issue, but how long does our current contract with one digital go?
I think it goes until twenty-six. No? Twenty-five? Twenty-eight?
Twenty-eight.
Okay.
So, asking for it now would give us that information for the last few years of our, the next few years of our, the remainder of our current contract. It's not like the contract expires in six months or something. Okay. I have no more questions.
Okay. All those in favor, say aye.
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 Those opposed, say nay.
Nay.
Nay. That was a nay?
Yes.
What was that?
Sorry, nay.
Okay. So what do we do then?
This is what we need to say.
Okay. So, what do we do about that?
Oh. If it doesn't have a majority, it doesn't pass.
Okay. Okay. In our final item under new business, we will consider adopting a resolution designating funds as committed funds. I will be presenting the resolution this evening and would like to start with reading the resolution. Pursuant to due call and notice thereof, a regular meeting of the School Board of Independent School District Number 191, State of Minnesota, was duly held in the school district on February 13th, 2025, at 6:30 o'clock PM. The following members were present. What is this?
All of us?
Okay. So who was? Is it just everybody that's?
Everybody.
Okay. Director Anderson, Director Werb, or Director Chester, Superintendent Battle, Director Werb, Director Alt, Director Mickelson, Director Hume. Okay. And the following were absent. Nobody was absent. Okay. What does this mean? Member blank of the adoption of this? Whereas the governmental standards accounting board has issued statement number fifty-four establishing a hierarchy of clarifying constraints that govern how a government entity can use amounts reported as the fund balance. And whereas the school board has adopted policy seven fourteen, fund balances, which recognizes the authority of the school board to commit, assign, or evaluate existing fund balance classifications as described and defined in G A S B dash fifty-four, and to identify the intended uses of the committed or assigned funds. And whereas, policy seven fourteen defines committed fund balance amounts as unrestricted funds used for specific purposes pursuant to constraints imposed by formal action of the school board and that remain binding unless removed by the school board by subsequent formal action. And whereas pursuant to legislative actions, specifically Chapter fifty-five, Section thirty-two of the 2023 Laws of Minnesota, the legislation, any remaining net proceeds received by the school district in connection with a lease of real property or the sale or exchange of school buildings or real properties specifically identified in the school district's open facilities action plan may be deposited in the school district's general unrestricted fund following the deposit of such lease proceeds or the application of such sale or exchange proceeds notwithstanding Minnesota statutes, Sections one twenty-three B dot fifty-one, subdivisions four and six. And whereas the school district has received proceeds from the sale of a portion of the parking lot at the, at the school district's Diamond Head Education Center in the amount of nine hundred thousand, the sale proceeds, which is subject to the legislation. And whereas the school board hereby finds and determines that it is necessary and appropriate to designate the sale proceeds as committed funds under policy seven fourteen. Now therefore be it resolved by the School Board of Independent School... Nice. District 191, State of Minnesota, as follows. The school board hereby commits to utilizing the sale proceeds for the following purposes. The purpose, programming, no staffing, justification for expenditure, K through twelve pathways, estimated amount nine hundred thousand. The committed funds described above cannot be used for any purpose other than as specified above unless the school board adopts a subsequent resolution to modify or remove the restriction or other, or otherwise redirected, the funds for other purposes. The motion for the adoption of the foregoing resolution was duly seconded by... Oh, sorry. Okay. Um, okay. For those looking for additional details, full, details, they can find the full resolution available in the public board packet for review. So at this time, I would like to ask for a motion that the Board of Education approve the resolution designating funds as committed funds.
So moved.
Moved by Director Hume?
Second.
Second by Director Chester. Moved by Director Hume, seconded by Director Chester. Is there any discussion? Having been moved and seconded, this resolution will require a roll call vote. So in just a second, I will ask Sarah to call the roll, and when she calls your name, please respond with either an aye if you are in favor of the resolution, or nay if you are opposed. Sarah, will you please make the roll call?
Director Hume?
Aye.
Director Mickelson?
Aye.
Director Alt?
Aye.
Chair Werb?
Aye.
Director Chester?
Aye.
Director Anderson?
Aye.
Next on our agenda is a work session to discuss the FY twenty-six initial information and parameters and the school name change recommendations. Before starting this work session, I move that we take a brief recess and return to this agenda item at nine. I don't, nine o'clock.
Just say nine.
Is there a second? Moved by myself and seconded by Director Alt. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, nay. The motion carries unanimously. We will return to the dais at nine o'clock. Okay.
Dr. Solvahn begins the presentation. I do want to provide some background and some context for the information that you're about to receive. Tonight's workshop is not to present a specific proposals for next year's budget, but to share preliminary information about our assumptions, what our approach has been and will be to create a sustainable budget, and to show the Board different scenarios of how we might proceed. And then, of course, to give you a chance to discuss, to ask questions, and share your thoughts. I do ask at the end of tonight's workshop, or at the end of this presentation, I hope to receive some direction from the Board to give me and my team to guide us as we begin to develop our initial budget proposal. Over the past couple of years, I've recommended some cautious optimism over the budget, about the budget, in part because there was reason to believe the state may be providing an increase in funding for schools. This year, you'll see we may lean more heavily toward caution than optimism. For one thing, we know the state's budget will be tighter, and it's entirely unclear where the state legislature will land in terms of educational funding. In addition, there's tremendous uncertainty right now about educational funding and policy at the federal level. When we talk about our budget, we often note that federal funding is the smallest of our major revenue sources behind state aid and our local taxes. Still, we receive almost $6 million from the federal government this year, all of it to support programs for students with diverse needs. This includes support for special education, math and reading interventions, early learning, and much more. This funding is essential for the services we provide our students and families, and any interruption could be painful. With all of that said, we are in a strong financial position to begin with, and just last month, you, the Board, approved the revised 2024-25 budget, which showed our expected unassigned fund balance reaching 24% by the end of the year. This fund balance continues to provide you with options in times of uncertainty. And in addition, our enrollment is stronger than expected. When we were planning for the current school year, we built our budget expecting about 7,000 students in grades K-12, but right now, we're about 7,200. So there's a lot to consider as we move forward with the 2025-26 budget, but as always, we will take a values and priorities-based approach based on our strategic roadmap for this important work. We will continue to focus on our priorities, those strategic directions that the Board approved, and the commitment to be a pre-K-12 pathways district. With that, I will turn it over to Executive Director Stacy Solvahn, who will go through the presentation, and then I'll cover one slide about the survey results. We did open the survey first, and then after this presentation and direction, we'll have dates, and we'll open it back up.
Thank you, Dr. Battle, Chair Verne, members of the Board. We'll go through a presentation very similar to the one we had last year. We, again, for me, as I present this information to you, always looking to provide the Board with options, so you're not painted into a corner. You have different ways to approach things, and we will be looking for that guidance a little bit later. In the agenda for this presentation, we will be looking at our timeline for the budget development, the enrollment projections for 2526, our current reality, which will include a brief outline of the revenue and expenses, our approach, which has the values, strategies, research as we move forward, the initial input, which Dr. Battle said she will identify with our open survey, and then we'll be looking for your guidance and the parameters going forward. In earlier January, you have already received the information from Tyler Denny, our Finance Director, and took action to approve our FY25 revised budget. We are at the point now where we are reporting to you on our assumptions and looking for parameter options. In March, the Superintendent will be bringing back her initial budget recommendations. At that point, we will be opening up the survey portal again, looking for feedback based upon those recommendations. March through May, we will have staff and community presentations and feedback opportunities, and then be following those up with Board workshops. In April, we will make adjustments based upon that feedback for our proposed budget. And then finally, in June, we will present to you during a work session, the adopted budget, and then we'll ask for your approval before June 30th, which is required by law. Our revenue is based simply upon the number of students in which we serve. The more students we serve, the more state and local tax dollars we receive. That is the student funding formula, and that is how most of our programs and services are sponsored. Again, as Dr. Battle has outlined, the majority of that does come from the state, followed by our local tax levy, and then finally from federal sources as well. Our enrollment projections, as you can see, since 2018, this kind of gives you an idea of what our enrollment has been month over month for the last two, four, six, eight years. I'm sorry. And right now, we're a little bit behind where we were at this point last year for February. We're down about 35 students, but again, we are above what we were projecting for this year, which was 7,000. So you kind of see a phenomenon that's going on for us. We had, two years ago, we went flat, which was unexpected. Then we took about a 200-student decline, and now we're flat again with what we had from last year. So it... Not exactly sure why we're having these big incremental drops. We do know that our kindergarten class continues to decline. And one of the other things that I would speculate is that our virtual academy program, though, especially from the middle school up, continues to grow. Year over year, we are actually ahead of where we were before with enrollment. So kindergarten is going down, but we are attracting students with some of our other programming, which is kind of offsetting that. We are going to take a conservative approach. We're not going to anticipate that we will be level. We will look at 7,021 students for K-12 that we'll be building our budget upon.
What was that number?
7,021 students.
Is that the top of the chart?
Yeah, them right there.
It's a busy chart.
There are areas in which are restricted as far as revenue. These would include our technology, capital levy, title funds. Title funds is one of those areas that represents federal funding to the district, and also our long-term facility maintenance funds. Eighty percent of our expenditures are on people. This includes all of our salaries and benefits, for all of our teachers, clerical staff, all of the different units as listed there. Eighty percent is pretty much the norm for many organizations, school districts in particular, that expenditures are used upon. So that is a combination of our salary and benefits. Other expenses then include utilities, transportation, technology, materials, supplies, and contracted One of the charts that we've used now on a regular basis is just to outline for the Board and the community that funding for education, when taking in consideration inflationary costs, is the gap is widening over time, and we continue to fall behind what we need as far as addressing those needs. Revenue and expense changes year over year. So increased revenue over our current year, we are anticipating only receiving the inflationary increase from the state. The last go-around, they said they had a built-in inflationary increase that would be no lower than 2%, no higher than 3%. So based upon the inflation for looking back over the last calendar year, we're anticipating that it will be at least 2.4%. Given the trends in inflation over the past few months, it may adjust a little bit higher. Point-tenth of a percent isn't going to be huge, but we don't expect the state to add any more money above the inflationary increase, given their budget concerns in the near future. 2.4% would be about $175 more per student, or roughly about $319,000. The $319,000, it looks like, well, shouldn't we have more? Well, remember, we're also looking at a decline in enrollment, so that's reflecting the smaller enrollment for next year as well. We won't be experiencing any increase in the formula for our EL students, so we had a bump in that last year to go into this year. We also had a little bit of the cross-subsidy for EL. We're not getting anything this year for that. In the next couple of years, we do expect a little bit of an increase. I think that is already built in, but not for this upcoming fiscal year. Special education formula will increase about $1 million for us. Our property tax levy, we had a decline of just over 4% in our local levy, but in some areas, they actually went up. So those areas would be like our capital projects line item went up. Our long-term facility maintenance increased by 2.3 million. That action was taken by the Board in September, as we came back with additional projects that we wanted to include from our 10-year plan. And then the general tax levy actually decreased by 5.5 million. So that's... And again, as we state during our levy certification, most of that stuff is driven at the state as far as the formulas and the students in the line items that they're calculating that on. Big pushes with that do include our enrollment and also home values. Okay? But that part of the formula. The big thing you probably have heard quite a bit about is the compensatory moving forward. The whole harmless is running out at this point in time. We will be looking at, if nothing is done to address that, we'll be looking at about $2 million less than what we currently have this year. So that'll be going from about $15 million to $13 million in that area, if I'm not mistaken. Also miscellaneous one-time funding that we received this year for a number of different things from the state. They said, "Go do this." Specifically, one of the areas would include probably our REACT would be the $577,000 that we will not have again in FY26. So our increased expenses, we are building into our budget a 2.5% increase to salary schedules, just about $5 million. This is the year in which all of our collective bargaining units, the contracts expire and will need to be renegotiated for FY26. We are doing a very conservative figure of about 7.5% to our insurance increase year over year, about $1.6 million. Currently, it is actually trending about 2.5% lower than that, but again, we are going to underestimate our revenue and overestimate our expenses. So we are looking at about a 5% transportation increase, again, just under $600,000. And then also other areas, including utilities, supplies, capital contracts, and stuff. We are about a 5% increase, so just over $1 million. I also put the long-term facility maintenance, a $2.3 million, here on the expense side. This is one of those areas where you receive revenue in from the local, but you also then turn around, you're spending it within that same fiscal year. So to offset the balance sheet, we'll show it on both sides. Structurally sustainable budget. Again, we want to make sure that we're continuing to provide resources for creating those conditions to support our 191 strategic roadmap. We want to continue to maintain our current class size and the parameters with that. We're maintaining balance and expenditures and revenue for restricted funds. Use of restricted funds before general undesignated funds. This is one of those things where I'm sure it gets a little unnerving for Board members as we look between what was adopted and our revised budget. We are constantly adjusting based upon where we are with our restricted funds and trying to use those first. So sometimes things look like they're moving from unassigned budget or in more general unassigned areas, and we're using the restricted funds first to free up the money that we have more flexibility to use in other areas. So that... We'll always be monitoring and always be adjusting through the budget year with those. And also understanding the ebb and flow of revenue streams and expenses.
I have the next slide. Initial input survey that was sent out by our Communications Department. We had community input as well as principal departmental input. We've only received 11 responses, the first round. I don't think that's unusual because, you know, they didn't have this presentation, and then they don't have my initial budget. I'm sure we'll have more the second round. But some of the areas include continue expanding, improving pathways at elementary school, small class sizes, behavior socio-emotional, specific learning need support, reduce administration, maintain the arts and extracurricular activities, and continue grow your own efforts. Principal, as well as our departmental input, non-licensed support for instruction, instructional support for multilingual students, the instructional coaches, full-time specialists, athletics, activities administration, smaller class sizes, expanded media library staffing, additional clerical support, instrumental lessons, and restorative coaching positions. So we'll end with the next steps for budget feedback shared. We will reopen the survey in March 14th, and it will close April 13th. During March and April, we'll have school and program-level parent meetings, so that's staff also meetings, presentation shared with family, staff. Community presentation, April 16th, 6:00 PM here at Diamond Head Education Center. And to be scheduled will be budget presentations and feedback for our Spanish-speaking family and our Somali parent meetings that we have. So hopefully, when I bring you preliminary investments, I'll have those dates for you. And that concludes...
Oh, no.
Oh, oh, my goodness, the scenario is the main part.
It has been a long evening. I'm more ready to go if you folks are not.
Yes, the main part, because I need the direction, right?
So we try to present you folks again with a continuum from kind of one extreme to the other extreme. I'm calling them scenarios. They're not options, but you get a feel of, well, if we did a little bit of this, we're going to kind of land here. If we do this, we're going to land here. It's more to give you a flavor of what that might look like, and then as we kind of move forward... forward, we'll say, what is your comfort level as far as the options moving forward? The first scenario is to try to maintain our fund balance as it currently is, so be right around 24%. It's like you like a 24% unassigned fund balance, so therefore, let's cut $11 million to maintain that. Okay? That's the one extreme. The other side of that is you could reduce, have, just maintain your class sizes and spend down your fund balance by about $11 million, or 8.11%. You're going to end up just over 16% for a fund balance. Now with scenario two, as we get that and you start seeing the tables, the reality is you could do two years of spend down with only doing right sizing and still be above board policy of 8%. That's our projection. So that's how much flexibility you have going forward. Scenario three would be, you know what? Let's kind of split this up. We'll do four and four. So a 4% reduction year one, 4% reduction in the fiscal year '27, and by the time you're done with that, we would be somewhere around that 16.5% again. The last scenario would be, we're going to cut, and we're going to land at 20%, and we're going to hold at 20%. So you would be cutting about 4.5 million the first year, reduce your fund balance, and then the second year would be more steeper cuts for that. And this is just kind of the cover sheet. We, all sorts of numbers, all the different assumptions that are listed within this. Again, scenario one, let's reduce our spending. This would be the most severe, the budget cuts. So you would do 11% or $11 million in year one, and then in year two, another $2 million, and you would still be sitting over a 24% fund balance. Again, you see the percent of increases, the assumption 5% expenditure increase, 7.5% for health, dental, the number of students, all of that type of stuff on the bottom left. The mid, middle part is showing the assumptions for FY '27 and how we kind of got to that point. Scenario two, again, maintaining class sizes, again, the assumptions for the expenses and the revenue, and by year two, you would be at at about 8.8%. Always caution, that second year is more of getting you into the ballpark and not on base. I mean, it's way still out there, and quite frankly, based upon, you probably get tired of hearing this, but ever since COVID, everything is messed up. Yeah, no, I mean, unemployment, work, and even finances, because what used to be very strong predictability is like, I got this stable enrollment, the enrollment is always going to be there, we know solidly what our formulas are going to be, you plug it in, everybody's on the same page, and things happen. Honestly, over the last five years, so many changes have occurred within school finance that some of this is, we're pretty darn close, but there's a lot of moving underneath us, and I'm sorry for that. We're still trying to navigate all of that, and this year is another example of how will this impact our compensatory? How may our federal money be impacted? What will special ed impact be as far as transportation? A number of different proposals that are out there that makes this a little bit challenging. Scenario three, again, you'd be looking at about $5.5 million in reductions in year one, then about $1.5 million in year two. That's year four and four. So you're kind of taking the front end. Then the second one, that gets you that 16.73. And then the final one, again, it's like, well, we're going to take $4.5 million on year one, drop, and then you can cut another 7.9 to stay at around 20%. All of these scenarios don't reflect the action that you took tonight as far as committing funds. That's about a nine, well, it's a $900,000 swing, but it's 0.65%. That's the impact that it has as far as your, your fund balance has moving to committed.
Yeah, so it'll come out of that unassigned on this slide, the 33 million.
Yeah, so like on this last one where it's, well, it's 24.91 is what we are looking at, so you're looking at about 24.26% is what it'll, the actual will be at this point than going forward with this. Okay? So really, kind of what we're looking for is the guidance on what kind of a percentage you would like the board. I mean, there's different ways you can say, you know, we want to end up at a certain dollar amount, or if you want to say, we want a percentage of the fund balance that we want to move to. And we will try to hit those marks in either way as we bring forward the budget with that.
That's it?
Yep.
Does anyone have questions? It's so late, they're starting to vacuum.
Yeah, because it's like, I've waited as long as I can.
This is a sign.
No, no, this is ready to get out when we hit 11 o'clock.
I can, I have a kind of a softball question we can ask while we have the distracting noise in the background. I think you mentioned, or you mentioned, we've only received 11 survey responses so far. How is that survey communicated, shared with the community, exactly? Because I'm surprised with only 11 responses. I'm sure Aaron is probably running from across the hall.
He'll come and answer.
Okay.
He'll come and answer.
There he is.
Thank you, Chair Worb and members of the board and Dr. Battle. We distribute the survey in a number of different ways. We share it as part of our monthly newsletter. We share it with the schools so that they can put it in their newsletters. We had a couple of direct messages to families as well that were just about the budget after it came, after the first presentation and letting them know that the input survey was opening. Of course, we put it on social media and on the website as well. So those are the primary ways we push it out.
Okay. So it seemed that every family in the district should have had the opportunity to complete the survey if they read the email. Yeah.
Yeah, if they read the email or the school newsletter.
Something I struggle with all the time on my day job. Yes.
And it's, having done this, we do kind of a similar structure to input and feedback, or we have at least over the last many years now, where we do input prior to the, sort of the development of a preliminary budget, and then we do feedback on that preliminary budget. So people get to see it. We usually get more, more reaction and engagement with the feedback because it's something to react to.
Sure.
Whereas the input is a little bit more general, what do you value, and what are your ideas that we might start to consider? Especially if we're in a year where we maybe have a good fund balance, we're in a reasonably strong financial position, people are feeling fairly comfortable, we're less likely, obviously, to get feedback as well.
Thank you.
Sorry, can I jump on that real quick? Sorry. In the past, I remember getting a text message with, asking me to take that survey, and I don't remember getting one this go around. I heard about it from someone else.
I think we sent it out in, as a, what we, what, under our new system is called the smart alert, in which case you'd get a text message, and if you weren't signed up to get text messages, you would get a phone call to let you know about it, but I'll double check to make sure that that's what.
I know other families talking about it, but I, do I not get one now?
You should.
Sure.
You're still a parent.
You still get one as a parent.
Yeah, and of course, it went to staff as well, staff, as part of the staff newsletters.
Okay.
I was just going to say, I would have to go back and look, I don't recall the wording, but yeah, something, you know, I'm just wondering if something along the, with the wording, just you start talking about budgets and people's eyes glaze over? You know, I mean, with what the wording was, if there's a different way to just phrase it so that, you know, somebody's going to look, what, a survey about budget, or, oh, I'm not, I, I don't know anything about that, or just, you know.
Planning for next year.
Taking a look at the wording that just maybe avoid the word budget. Right? Different words for budget. Just, you know, I'm just, as far as the response level, that maybe, you know, a little bit different phrasing that people won't find is intimidating. Just being in finance, people don't like the word budget.
I had a question. I was surprised, Stacy, to see the, looking across the two years and the recommendations in each of the scenarios, if I'm not mistaken. The first year reduction was less than the second year. And I would think that we would want the reduction to be larger in the first year.
Depends on the scenario. So one of the scenarios, I think, well, the one that I have currently up, if you wanted to go down to like 20%, that isn't too much of a, that's a small step. There's not a lot of cut. In the year two, if you wanted to maintain and stay at 20%, that's where it gets pretty significant. If we do the four and fours.
Which was three? Scenario three?
Yep, scenario three. You're correct. The major cut is on year one of about 5.5 million, and then it'd be a little bit less the second year.
I was looking at the last one. Thank you.
Again, just one other thing to remind you, kind of the peaks and valley that we've been going through, the actual results for, with our audited results for FY '23 was 16.4%. The actual results for FY '24, again, we jumped back up to over 24%. The adopted budget for the current year that we were in, we tried to get back down to 16.4%. And Tyler and his team just can't seem to help themselves, but we're right back up to 24.91%. So, you know, coming in where I'm saying, cutting about $11 million, again, that gets you back to that 16.4%, which still allows quite a bit of flexibility and options for the board. These are high numbers at the moment.
So the reductions, those are outside of the right sizing?
Yes.
Right. If we were to cut, if you just want to spend your fund balance down by $11 million, you'll get to that 16% range again.
But there would be, and I'm just saying this to make sure, because it's getting late.
Thank you. Oh, I can talk all night about the budget.
There's right sizing first that happens, and then additional cuts that have to be made.
Right sizing is just built into our process. And that sounds really, you can flip that around to, we're maintaining class size. So as our enrollment declines, I will have fewer students, therefore, fewer staff, because, and I can still have the same, you know, relatively small classes across the district as a whole. That isn't creating burden on the instruction, because I'm still looking at 25 elementary students or whatever. Now, if we were, the cuts would be something like, well, we're going to raise it from 25 to 26, or we're going to cut it within departments. The right sizing really is just matching the enrollment.
Okay. But it's the right sizing amount built into the $11 million deficit?
Yep. Across the board, we always assume the right sizing. Yep.
So it's part of the $11 million, not, or is it in addition to? You know, so like, let's say, right sizing would be $3 million, and then we would need to only reduce spending by 8 million, or do we actually have 14 million we're talking?
Right.
Right. No, the right sizing is built into the total amount that you would have to do. But even if you're just going to spend down your fund balance, I would still recommend that we do our right sizing.
Correct.
Of course.
I guess it would be helpful to know what the right sizing amount is, rather than to have it baked in.
200 students is what we're projecting, a little, little less than 200 students. On average, again, district-wide average, it's about 25 students per teacher, so it's going to be roughly about eight teachers. That's roughly.
And the eight teachers.
Could be just under a million.
That's just right sizing, eight teachers at a million.
Salary and benefits, like 800.
Yeah, it'd be roughly a million dollars.
Okay. Thank you.
And that's ideal. That's like if every building had that perfect loss of 25 students in one grade or one content area.
It happens that way.
Right. That's exactly.
So more than likely, it would be less than that, because I just can't do it.
Right.
Are we entertaining recommendations or our perspectives?
I mean, I think that's what Dr. Battle said at the beginning she was looking for.
Yeah, because, I mean, I can kick it off. I, I hesitate with wanting to get to 8% by year two, only because we still have two other uncertain years ahead of us, especially at the federal level, that can trickle to the state. And so I, I'm more looking at a scenario that is a reasonable spend down, because we do have a healthy fund balance, and I think we should utilize it. At the same time, I also think we would, you know, definitely right size accordingly, and then figure what reductions, how we want to face additional reductions. But I don't think it's, for me, it's not scenario, scenario two? Is it scenario two, or is it scenario one?
One and two.
One and two are the two extremes.
I'm not for either extreme.
Right. We're just, right.
I kind of want something, a blend.
Giving you a little bit of a peek across the horizon, but we are trying to only approve the one budget out of, one fiscal year at a time.
Yeah, of course.
And, and I, I am not in a hurry to race to the bottom, if you will. I really, to protect our programming and the different things we have in place, I, from my position, I'd like to stay somewhere between 12 and 14%. I'm just telling you, because that way, you do have something to write out, a really unexpected type of a year, without having to threaten all of the predictability of our programming.
Because I remember when we voted to go to six, so.
If I, if I may, I agree with you. Shocker. I think scenario three or four, some version of that, or 3.5, if you will, but I think, I agree. I don't think we want to hang on to the entire fund balance, but I also don't think we want to spend it all in a year, or most of it in a year, even half of it in a year. I think it's really important, I'm going to drag out a cliche that I am fond of saying, I kind of see our unassigned fund balance as a rainy day fund, and it's time to get out the umbrellas. So we don't know if it's a monsoon or a gentle rain, but it's definitely raining. So let's save some umbrellas for a future day, but also, let's break them out for this year. That was a lot of umbrellas. That's all I have to say.
And it can't even rain here yet.
It would just be snow right now, right?
No, I, I agree as well. I think exercising caution because of so many unknowns, and there are others in the mix as well. I'm not necessarily, typically, I wouldn't be a proponent of maintaining a higher fund balance, but I think this is one of those times.
I think there's so much uncertainty at both the state and the federal level right now, that we have to do what we can to keep something aside for a future that we can't predict right now.
And we also need to become more active with our legislative advocacy.
Yes.
To do that, yeah.
I was gonna, I think that was the other thing I was going to add when I was going to have like free microphone to go, March 10th is MSBA Day on the Hill. We are going to equip anybody who wants to join us with talking points with your legislators, especially with compensatory.
And even not that, if you can't make that day, they are.
Write them, yep.
Write them, and they're here, and they're.
Call them.
Call them. They, they will accept meetings, yeah.
Yep.
Yeah, so, yeah, I just want to reiterate and get kind of on the record is, is really kind of agreeing that, I think that we want to be able to maintain our programs, we want to maintain what we're able to offer at this time, and so, you know, it does mean dipping into the, the fund balance a little bit, but yet, we need to maintain that fund balance because, you know, we really don't know what could be coming down the pipe in the next, you know, two, three, four, or five years. It just, we, we are really lucky in the fund balance that we have. I'm new to the board, but I I'm new to the board, but I know that from conversations I've had and things that I've heard and that, I mean, we're, we're really lucky to have this. And, you know, I don't want to be, you know, pulling off those four leaf, four leafs yet. You know, really want to be able to keep, keep that luck going. And so I think you've put together, you know, some really good examples and some really good ideas of, and showing the different extremes and what's in the middle. So thank you very much for that. And, you know, so I think, you know, we're all on the same wavelength here about something in that, you know, scenario three to four. So, but, you know, thank you.
So Director Mickelson, I will say, yes, luck, but this board was, has been very strategic.
Yes.
I was thinking...
That was a better word.
Fortune X.
Yes, fortunate is a much better word.
Things happen, but I'm telling you, the board actions and together with me, I really think it made the difference, very strategic, getting that new roadmap, saying we're going to fund our priorities, being very clear, and then taking some good financial actions.
It's board action, but it's also board action that's brought to us by you and your team.
Right.
So we wouldn't...
So that partnership.
It's a partnership, absolutely.
And I have to ask the question, I'm 99.9% sure I know the answer, but I have to ask it. Cutting stuff isn't going to yield much. It's nickels in the, in the couch cushions.
You do ask that.
Yeah.
Please be on record.
We, we will make the most of any of the areas in which we can.
Yeah.
You know, as far as maximizing, you know, we have a, we have a number of leases, different things that are always turning over. One of them that's coming up is like our photocopiers and, you know, Rachel and her team are heavily involved, along with finance, on trying to come up with the best deals moving forward. And, and I mean, some of these different opportunities yield anywhere between 10 to 20, 25,000 dollars in savings.
Yeah.
You know, and we just keep looking for corners in that way.
Facility leasing, like here Diamond Head, like fees?
Uh...
Increasing?
We need a little bit more like for rental, for...
For rental, yeah. Yeah, renting, renting, yeah, yeah.
Again, those are the types of things that Community Ed will bring back to the board and, you know, ask for approval to be able to do some of those things.
And luck, just to tell you, remember one year Dave, our Director of Operations, found $400,000 he could reduce? And then the next year is when we had that worst winter and his snow removal went over by 500,000.
Yeah.
It comes on the wash sometimes.
Yeah.
It's like, wow, Dave, really, it's snowing again.
Yeah. Winters and legal fees.
Yes.
I mean, you, you can go a number of years where you don't need a lot of it, and then all of a sudden you get hammered.
Yeah.
And then like a lot of snow removal or whatever along that line. I'm going to, a half a percent is about $700,000, okay? So, you know, it's like, all right, so for, for every half a percent coming down from that 24, that's about a $700,000 reduction, if you just want that quick, quick math to get there. Are we talking 18%, 19%, 20%? What should be our target? So if, if I'm, you know, so if I say 18%, that's 6% decline and that's 12 times $700,000. So you're, you know, you're, you're looking at, what, about 8.4 million? Does that sound about right as far as cuts? Or spend down, I should say, spend down?
Down on the fund balance.
Yep. And then the rest, that would leave about 2.6 million then to come up as far as reductions? I'm just...
Not under, not under 18, I would say.
Don't go under 18.
Not under 18.
I was just looking, scenario three was at 18.73.
It's like in between.
Three and four.
Sixteen.
And then scenario four was 19.9.
Yep. Don't go below 18.
I mean, I was kind of joking when I said scenario 3.5, but what, splitting the difference is pretty much 18.
Yeah. Again, these aren't options.
Of course. But they're called scenarios.
Right, right.
Just to clarify, it's 18 for FY '27.
Six.
Six.
Next year.
So we go from 24, whatever, to 18% in our fund balance.
Ah, okay.
Not under.
And then you get to reevaluate?
No, I just meant because for FY '26, you know, it's not, they're both sitting at 20, 20-something percent.
For scenario four.
Versus FY '27, so moving down where it, you...
Right.
Go steeper, it's, you know, you're between 17 and near 20 again. And so that's why I was asking if it's actually FY '27 that we don't want to steep below 18.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Over the two years, yeah. The two-year projection.
Over the two-year, don't go.
No, that's fair.
You know, just, just to see what the, that balance is. I, I, I think I'm probably leaning more towards scenario three, well, 3.5, yeah. Like a 3.5.
Yeah.
Oh, you're right. I was looking at the 26, 27 percentages when I said those numbers. Scenario three was basically 21%.
Yeah.
Yeah. And I think we could probably really spend down more than that, yeah. But, but I don't want it to where it depletes too heavy on the following year.
Exactly.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Because come that year, we may choose to do something.
So maybe we work towards a 20% fund balance for FY '26? And then that still leaves us, I mean, it's basically scenario four at that point because that's 19.98.
And that's, and that's with the two and a half increase to salaries.
Right.
Baked into the...
Yeah.
Baked into the budget.
Again, very conservative on the revenue.
Yep.
Very conservative on the expenses.
Nope. Over projecting on the expenses.
Yep, I get it.
So how these things kind of start falling into place, you may not need the amount of reductions because even if we're held harmless on our compensatory, the way it's calculated, I won't go there, but the way it's calculated...
No, please don't.
It would actually, could be as much as a $4 million swing.
Yeah. Yeah, they had a meeting with the business managers and all the business manager came back and talked to the soups and we, the soup said, we need a meeting so we can understand the, yeah, it's very complicated.
Which is, we'll take care of a lot of these numbers right off the get-go, just the compensatory hold harmless for us for FY '26.
Right.
And we won't know until legislation closes.
They are in session now, right?
They are in session.
They are in session, but they'd have to approve whatever by May.
That's right, by May.
So by May.
Yes.
Okay. So I just wanted to provide my input as well. I guess I personally am leaning more towards the four. I have some grave concerns about federal funding.
Hmm.
Just being real.
Yep.
So...
You said scenario four?
Yes. I mean, we can always, you know, revisit these. I mean, this is like obviously a projection, but just being very top of mind as far as like the lands, current landscape that we're looking at. I just very concerned about that.
Okay.
So, but appreciate you putting this together and...
We'll be back in March.
So I'm, I'm hearing 20% is our target. Again, you, as, pulling back up the timeline, we'll have some initials that will be brought back to you in March. We'll look for some feedback. Also, March through May, that whole timeframe, we should have a much better idea as far as our funding from both the state, what those numbers may look like, as, as probably clarification also from the federal level. And so we may be able to make some adjustments. Would like to be able to kind of tie everything down by May because it's a lot of pressure on finance to get to an actual budget in place, so with that. But we'll, we'll start off with 20%. That's what I'm hearing?
Thank you.
Perfect. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Director Solvine. Thanks.
Thanks, everyone. It is now time to move on to our discussion on the school name change recommendations.
I can kick us off. In terms of the recommendations to change the names of the schools, I, I think that makes sense. I think it also makes sense to not simply make name changes. I, I would add land and nature based. I mean, as far as how to, how to name people, now, name the schools but not after people, I would suggest we put that in policy. So that, because right now...
Yes.
It's, we have the ability to name...
A name.
A person, yeah, a school after a person, and we know history isn't a thing to rely on when it comes to people. So that's one thought. The other thought is, I think we also should consider adding William Byrne, Joseph Nicolet, and Baz to the list.
And Ron.
And Ron? Is Ron after a person?
Ron's after a farmer, yeah.
Got it. Okay.
Did you say Baz?
Baz. Because, and I know that's odd, I would officially like to name, have Baz return to Cedar School because we had a presentation a couple of years ago that has really stayed with me when our students, Baz, one of our Baz students very eloquently advocated, explained how it made her feel to mention or, or have people hear that she attends the alternative high school. And the alternative high school is the alternative to the high school. And, and she's, she put it much better than I, but I think at the very least, we should officially make Cedar School Cedar School and make sure that we as a school district are calling it Cedar School to respect the students who go there.
Would it be Cedar High School?
That's a good question. I don't know.
I, well, I don't, I'm not disagreeing with you, but I believe we have a process in place where it isn't, this wouldn't be the same process where we would ask Dr. Battle to convene a group?
Correct, yes. I'm putting, I'm putting it out there as a suggestion for Dr. Battle to...
Okay. That's a lot of changes potentially happening in a very short period of time.
It is, and we're in that process.
Yeah.
I mean, I, I don't know that we should, like, why would we limit ourselves simply to the ones that have already been identified?
Right.
Only to later on have the same thing happen again?
Well, that brings up one of my questions, which, so there were 28 people involved in kind of making, putting together this recommendation. I'm curious how aware others are in those school communities about the possibility of changes happening and what thoughts they might have shared with these 28 individuals who made this recommendation.
So for example, if you have consensus here that we should look at the other schools but change the names, so then we convene design teams for each one of the schools to get input. But then it leads to my question, which comes first? The policy change before our design?
Mm-hmm.
So then they clearly know?
Yeah.
So staff, parents, community, this is who we are as a community, and if it's land-based, what are the options?
My question is about the three schools we're talking about tonight, though.
Yep, the three schools. So if you give me direction that you believe we should change the names, then we will then have a design process for each one of the schools to get input.
And ask them to get...
That, that, help engagement.
From the community.
From the community.
And I would say, any families that are already engaged in the school community already know that this is a question that the board is looking at.
I mean, it's been out there for a year now, so you're probably right.
It's a surprise, it's because that's our under...
I don't know if Dr. Bell, Adam Anderson...
Pay attention.
Because Rebecca's not here, but they did a lot of research, so I'm not sure they don't know. So I don't know if you want to speak to that.
Well, that's what I just want to make sure of.
Yeah.
I, yeah, that, that people are aware and, if they don't love it, that they're at least aware that it's being considered.
Want to speak to that?
Like, not just these 28 people, but like a substantial portion of people.
Exactly. I think the way you're, the, thank you Superintendent Battle, Chair of members of the board, that the way you're looking at it as a continuum is likely that it's, it's not, the understanding is not limited just to the members of the design team, but certainly there are members of each of our school communities that are unaware of all the work that happens.
Sure.
And, and to your point, Scott, I think, and, and not knowing the details of the process, something like focus groups, I know in other initiatives that we've had were a really effective way of broadly pulling people into the conversation so that we know that more or most people know. Whether they're happy about it, I can, I can respect that.
Sure. I don't want people to feel blindsided.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Is, sorry. Oh, go ahead. No, please.
Because I'm kind of sort of changing the subject a little bit, so go ahead.
Well, I don't know, I might be too, I, I wanted to think about the, part of the recommendation was specifically for these schools that it not just include, that the design includes Indigenous band members. So going forward then, is that, is that our goal for all of our schools? Is that just for these three? I think there should be something specific to that. Does that make sense?
Yeah, I think, well, I, I think it makes sense to lean on the knowledge of the local Indigenous bands. I don't know that the, I think it needs to be inclusive but not solely reliant on...
Yep. Fair.
I mean, I think we got, we, with the addition, with the other schools that aren't officially part of this conversation.
Right, right.
I think we let the process play out and see if there is a recommendation, what that recommendation might be. It might be something, yeah, I don't know what it would be, but I think we let it play out and then make a decision down the road about that when the time comes.
So in this process, my, one of my thoughts I'm having right now is like, what is communicated to the students while this is happening? So, you know, I mean, the students are the ones that will be impacted too because it's their school they're going to and the name is changing, like...
Right.
Do, how do we present that to them as the student that goes there? To be sensitive to them, because they'll probably ask questions like, why is the name of my school changing? You know?
So I have been involved in this process as an associate soup for one of my schools, but then also as another time associate soup with another associate soup that went through the process. It actually is, the students are integral to the part, who we are as a school and the community. And so students were, I'll tell you the one school, the change of Ramsey in Minneapolis to Justice Page. So I wasn't there when they finalized it, but it was there, it needed to change. So yes, you're right, students are very integral to it.
Are you seeking any input from 197 because they went through the name change to Two Rivers?
Go ahead, you can speak to it.
Yeah, we, we did consult with them several times throughout our process.
Does it think that might be a good guide as somebody nearby?
Yes.
So my thing was, I, I definitely think that maybe, you know, taking a look at all of the different schools and the names and kind of rolling this all in, since we're kind of, let's keep the ball rolling, and, and while we're kind of working on this, let's take a look at all of the school names and things. But I'm wondering as far as...
a look at all of the school names and things. But I'm wondering, as far as rolling out new names, and I'm just thinking of budgets and the cost of, you know, changing all of the signs and everything.
Beautiful signs, too.
You know, we're going to want to do three and then three or two or something, that we're not going to be wanting to change all of them all at once. And that, I mean, I'm just thinking, you know, overall for cost, like, we can decide what we're doing, but we're going to, you know, message we're rolling this out or something? Because, I mean, it, I'm sure it can't be cheap to be changing everything at the schools.
I think if we're following the recommendation that's coming to us, it's for three schools right now.
Right.
So, I think in following that part of the process, we, I would recommend that we look at change in policy first, immediate, you know, as quickly as possible, and then move forward with.
Maybe we have another work session about the other schools after the policy is approved.
For, to take the next recommendation, to proceed with, because it takes time to go through the whole process to change a name. So, it might not happen.
It might be natural.
It might not happen tomorrow, but, but we want to make sure we're doing, we're giving that opportunity.
And I would guess, knowing our principals, it, and I, of course, would leave it up to them, but, you know, it, in my mind, I could see making sure that the name change is a special and unique moment for each school.
Oh, yeah.
Because there's going to be grieving, you know, alums that went through that, through the school, you know, and trying to bring families together around that and celebrating the new name. I kind of think that, and maybe Dr. Battle, you've experienced that, but I just, I feel like it, we need to honor each school.
Indeed.
And then with the other names that we're proposing, that's something that we could say, start researching.
Yeah.
Mm-hmm.
Yep.
Superintendent Battle, Chair, we're directors. So, just to summarize, taking a look at Policy 899 through our review committee, and then looking at the, after that happens, looking at the three schools that were reported on tonight through that Policy 899, and then kind of subsequently starting to get curious about some of the other schools that are named after people, as well as Burnsville Turnip High School.
Okay.
Yep.
All right.
Yep.
Is there any other comments or topics to discuss?
I think Dr. Battle touched on this, but I just want to say that, you know, at the end of the day, you know, as someone who, all three of my kids went to one of these schools that we're discussing right now, you know, renaming a school doesn't change the culture of the school. It doesn't change the staff. It doesn't change the students or the families. The culture of the school doesn't change because of a name change. So, I think it's important to keep that in mind. This is an acknowledgement that the world has grown and changed, and our understanding of what has been done in the past has also grown and changed. So, learning from and understanding the past is a good thing, just as a willing to apply, willingness to apply those lessons so we are better in the future is the right thing to do. So, that's my last thought on this for tonight.
Charles, it's.
Thank you.
Okay. The time is now 10:02, and having no further agenda items, I now call to adjourn this meeting of the Board of Education.
Thank you.